Evening, the Town of Los Gatos Council Meeting of December 17, 2024. I call this meeting to order. During the course of the meeting, we welcome comments from the public, either written or in advance or live comments. And so we ask that you fill out a speaker card and turn that in to our clerk. And we will also take comments on Zoom. When you're called on, please limit your comments to three minutes so that we can have a fair hearing and hear everyone who wants to speak. That's next. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Risto?
Here.
Councilmember Annie?
Here.
Councilmember Badami?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Hudes?
Here.
So the next thing is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could, would our pledge leaders please come up and join me here? So we're fortunate to have three members of our community to come up and do this. Do you know each other? Yeah, okay. You look like you knew each other. So first, Sophia Abu-Zayad. And Sophia is, her favorite activities are camp soccer, arts and crafts, and she also does community service with a kitten shelter and cleaning libraries. We also have Nishka Piyas, and she is in the fourth grade as well and does dancing, gymnastics, and math is one of her favorite subjects. And she does community service also with the Magic Yarn Project, creating fun wigs for cancer patients. She made cards for fellow Girl Scouts impacted by natural disasters and made cards for isolated seniors. Thank you for doing that. And we have Audrey. And Audrey also is in the fourth grade, and her favorite subjects are PE, art, and gymnastics. And she loves helping with the community farm and reading to kiddies at the San Jose Shelter. So thank you for doing this, and now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Thank you. So before you leave, some of the other council members would like to congratulate you, so if you wouldn't mind going to the end, and then come back around this way. Thank you. Thank you so much. Good job. Thank you. Great job. Thank you so much. Great. Another round of applause. It's my favorite part of the agenda, so thank you. Okay, now we will have a presentation. And this is a presentation of the Town of Los Gatos acceptance into the AARP network of age-friendly states and communities.
Hello?
Yes, it's working.
Okay. My name is Ann Hinton, and I'm a senior volunteer advisor with AARP. And it's my pleasure to be here tonight to make this presentation. So to the Honorable Mayor and council members, AARP would like to formally welcome the Town of Los Gatos as our 97th community in California to enroll in AARP's network of age-friendly states and communities. As you probably know, California's population is rapidly aging, and this is even truer here in Santa Clara County. By 2035, the last of the boomers will be 65, and older adults will outnumber children in this county. That will be five years sooner than across the rest of the country. It's projected by the California Department of Finance that adults aged 65 and older will make up 20% of Santa Clara County's population, but I just learned tonight from your mayor that you are already or close to the 30% mark, which is far higher than the rest of the county is. By enrolling in AARP's age-friendly network and the World Health Organization's global network of age-friendly cities and communities, the Town of Los Gatos leadership joins an international team of individuals who are committed to preparing for the coming demographic shift, as well as improving community livability for people of all ages and all abilities. As a member of the AARP network, the Town of Los Gatos will begin a two-year planning process that will engage community residents as well as key stakeholders in improving the livability in the community in eight areas of influence. These eight focus areas to help improve the health and quality of life for residents are as follows: outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation and housing, as you would expect, social participation, respect and social inclusion, civic participation and employment, communication and information, and last but not least, community support as well as health services. To help support the community's age-friendly work, the Town of Los Gatos will have access to resources, national and global research, planning models and best practices from across the world, and support from AARP and other aging experts. We applaud your efforts to make the community a great place to live, work, play for people of all ages. We look forward to working with the Town of Los Gatos, their leadership and their community, as you plan and implement innovative and thoughtful strategies to help make life better for people of all ages here. So we want to welcome you to the age-friendly, the network of age-friendly states and communities. And I have a plaque that I want to, I think, give to your mayor. I want to read it to you, though. This is to certify that the Town of Los Gatos, California, has committed to becoming more age-friendly under the criteria established by AARP and has been accepted as a member of the AARP network of age-friendly states and communities. And it's signed by Nancy Lamond, who is the Chief Advocacy Engagement Officer in our Washington, D.C. office.
It looks wonderful. I want to thank you so much for recognizing the Town of Los Gatos. We're very proud of the work that we do with our older adults, and we're also very concerned about being able to do that in a sustainable way on an ongoing basis. And the eight areas that you mentioned almost completely align with the chapters of our roadmap that we developed a little while ago, and so I wanted to again thank AARP for recognizing us.
Thank you. And I think we could use some of these volunteers.
So we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, which are the consent items. The consent items are considered routine and may be approved in one motion. At this time, do any members of the public have comments about one or more consent items? Come up, please. And Karen Yamamoto? And I see that you have comments about four, five, and six, which are on the consent calendar.
Do you want me to speak on all of them, or do you want me to just pick for?
If you could speak on all of them, please.
All right.
And you'll have three minutes.
All right. So for four, five, and six, I'm kind of concerned about how the Chapter 29 zoning regulations are going to affect us and a clarification or clarify the repeal. I'm sorry, that was number three. Excuse me. Let me back up. So number three, on number three, I don't have a card up there, but I forgot to. On number three, that adoption of the repeal of Town Code, Section 6, blah, 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 I need a clarification. So does that mean that the gas and electric is okay for both new builds and for existing builds? Or are we still getting rid of the gas? Or can you clarify?
So we don't respond to questions immediately, but there's an opportunity for council members to ask staff about these matters.
That's my question on that one. On four, five, and six, how is that going to affect on the Chapter 29, the rezoning regulations? How is that going to impact our housing element? And I know it's for the future housing element, but I'm already concerned about how the impact in infrastructure this is going to have on us as a town. I'd like a little bit more information on how rezoning some of these areas is going to affect us and how much this is going to cost. And this brings me to my next one, which is number 15. And that's adopting the town's community wildfire protection plan. I don't think you guys have taken into consideration all of the wildfire issues that we have. We are like paradise, California. We are a valley. We have three central roads in and out of Los Gatos. We have more than 30,000 people living here. If a fire breaks out, we will not be able to get everybody out, and there is no way our fire department is, has the capabilities of actually protecting us. I'm concerned that your plan now is not going to be sustainable later. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on any item which is not on our agenda?
Are you taking comments for consent?
On the consent, I'm sorry, on consent items, on consent items one through 16, one through 16, I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself. Okay, I don't see any more comments on consent items. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised for consent.
Okay. Any council members wish to make a comment, ask a brief question, or pull an item from the consent calendar? Councilmember Badami?
Thank you. So I have a comment and actually a question for staff. If you could respond to the speaker, the question that she raised in regard to consent item number three?
Thank you. This is Gabrielle Wieland, Town Attorney. I will start, and then the building official is present and may have additional information. This is a proposal to repeal the town's existing all-electric requirement that requires new construction to have all-electric infrastructure. If the ordinance is repealed, if it's adopted tonight, it would take effect 30 days from tonight. And at that point, new construction would be entitled to install gas infrastructure in addition to electric infrastructure. And at this point, I'll see if the building official has additional information.
Robert Gray, Chief Building Official, thank you for the question. Yes, Town Attorney Wieland is exactly correct. It will allow gas in new construction as part of the code, the standard state code that also requires electrical requirements or electrical pre-wiring for any gas appliances that now go in.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Moore?
Thank you. Yeah, real quick one. So to the commenters' questions about items four, five, six, can staff clarify those are implementation programs that the Town of Los Gatos already committed to as part of the housing element? Is that correct?
That's correct. And a few of them reflect existing state law. For instance, the first one, one of the housing element implementation programs was that the town update its density bonus ordinance to match state law. And so that's what's being done with item number four. And then items five, item five is also a function of state law, and it was also an implementation program that the town committed to in its housing element. And then item number six is a replacement units ordinance, which is also required by both state law and the town's housing element. And the effect of that ordinance is that whenever a developer removes existing units, those units need to be replaced with the same number of residential units.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Yes, Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. And then I just want to at least ask the Town Attorney to clarify for the benefit of people who are not at every meeting, like the five of us are, that these items are on consent because they were already discussed at the council level as items that had full hearings and public input at a prior meeting. And so the reason it's, could you explain why it's on consent now after we already made our decision at another meeting?
Yes. And then in addition, items four, five, and six were reviewed by the Planning Commission before they came to the Town Council. And so for ordinance, the procedure for adopting an ordinance is that it's introduced at one Town Council meeting, and then it will be adopted at a subsequent Town Council meeting, and then it will take effect 30 days after adoption.
Thank you. I have a comment about item 14, which is the annual financial report. And I would, having participated on the Finance Commission, I want to commend the full Finance Commission with their constructive comments, some of which were substantial and resulted in some changes to our financial report. But importantly, the productive conversations were held with staff and especially the Finance Director and the new Town Manager, as well as with the auditor. And so we're coming to this item with all of the recommendations having been addressed. So this is, I think, very, very important, and I want to thank folks for the work on it. So with that, would anyone like to make a motion? Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. I move to approve consent items one through 16.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. So now we move to a very important part of the agenda, which is verbal communications. And before we start, but the public has already provided some cards, but we have a very special person on the line, Congresswoman Anna Eshoo, who's represented our district and served our community for quite some time and has really been a remarkable leader in the Congress. So we're not, we don't have her? Okay. No? Okay. Well, we missed our chance, so anyway, thank you to Congresswoman Eshoo for all that you've done. So at this point, we're going to move to verbal communications for the public. And so I would like to remind people that verbal communications are for matters that are within the town jurisdiction and are not listed on the agenda. And so if you'd like to speak, please come forward when you're called. And if you haven't provided a card, please do so already. So I'm going to first call Michael Kane. And it looks like this is verbal communications. Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Kane. I've been a citizen of Los Gatos for over 35 years. I've run a business successfully for over 43 years, been a board of directors for Rotary, board of directors for Chamber, board of directors for the hospital, and I've been in and out of town government for the last 20 years. I'm here to address what happened at the last council meeting. The Los Gatos newspaper, Volume Four, Number 12, November, December 3rd, had a lead article in the front regarding an attempt by council member, at that time, Council Member Rob Moore. And it needed a second to get agendized, did not get a second, because I think there was a general belief that it was redundant to provisions we already had, specifically the resolution in 2017, as well as SB 54. This all deals with resources being used for mass deportation of alleged illegals. And I know once an item does not get agendized, it's dead. And so I'm not, I'm not asking for that to be re-agendized. What I'm asking is for, given that the provisions may be redundant, but they're still relevant, and it would be beneficial for many members of this community to hear from Town Council some kind of support or re-recognition or restatement of the 2017 resolution as well as SB 54, just to let folks know where you're at. Because with what I'm currently doing for the town and have been in the past, there are many, many, many citizens very distraught about things that could be coming down the pike that would adversely affect them. They're very distraught. That's putting mildly in some cases. So what I'm, what I'm asking is to somehow fit into your agenda, fit into your purpose by restating Senate Bill 54 in the 2017 in the context of maybe reducing some of those fears. Among other things, you would be educating the public that they exist, because whereas I know you are very familiar with what they are, the public in general is not. And right now, a lot of them feel naked and afraid. And so some sort of affirmation would be, I think, exceedingly constructive. On a separate note, there are certain commissions serving the town that do not want July off. And I would have you please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Next is Lindley, and that will be followed by Gus Hu. And so I read the names as they are on the card, and so if there's a first name or a last name, it's whatever is on the card. So please come up, Lindley.
Good evening, Town Council and neighbors. First, I want to congratulate you, Mr. Hudes, on taking the helm at this very special time in history, and I believe that each of you will do your best for the residents of Los Gatos. As we step into 2025, I feel a profound sense of gratitude and excitement for what lies ahead. This next year is not just another page in our nation's history, it's a monumental chapter. It's America's 250th birthday, a celebration of resilience, freedom, and the extraordinary up and down journey that has brought us here. Together, we are part of something historic, including the Jubilee Year of 2025, a time of renewal, reflection, and hope. Under strong leadership, our nation is on the path to reclaiming its greatness. President Trump's victory has sparked a renewed commitment to the values that make America exceptional: freedom, law and order, and opportunity for all. After years of unnecessary division in our town, I am sure we will witness a revival of hope. Our towns and cities, once marred by social unrest, are embracing peace and unity. Together, we are turning the page on censorship, defamation, and fear, and stepping into a future built on truth and liberty. Let's remember what this Jubilee 2025 represents: a time to restore relationships, forgive debts, and create new opportunities. As neighbors, we are called to lift each other up and love each other first before extending our efforts to love those we don't know yet. We will celebrate the many blessings we share. As American citizens, we are reminded of the sacrifices that built this nation, including our Town of Los Gatos and our responsibility to carry its ideals forward. As we prepare for America's semi-quinsentennial, let us honor our shared history with the shared purpose of uniting in love for each and every one of us. Let's support local businesses, strengthen community bonds, and teach our children the values that shape this nation. Together, we can ensure that this milestone is about forging a brighter future. Here's to a prosperous 2025 where every voice matters, every dream is within reach, and every community thrives like no other time in American history. Let's unite as one town under the leadership of Mayor Hudes, one state of California, and one nation under God to celebrate the freedoms we hold dear as Americans. Let's show the world that America's best days are closer than we thought. Our best days start now. Thank you, and may God bless you all and this great land and town that we call our home. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate you, Mayor. Got a fishing hat just to change up the thing for your being mayor and vice mayor. I'll start first with some of the things that, if you're not, I spoke with the clerk and the things, if it's not on the agenda, you're not allowed to use the town equipment. I wanted to show just a couple things, and you, one was about the shooter, which I brought up before. And then I also, I'm sorry, I'm not a public, I also sent in a second grader at Abundant Life Christian School called 911 to report the school shooting. And Madison Police Chief Sean Barnes told reporters, "Let that soak in for a minute." He said at the news conference, "A second grader student called 911 at 10:57 a.m. to report a shooting at, at school." And the reason why I wanted to show that on the screen is I have filed, prior, a while ago, I filed the lawsuit before I knew you, but I don't, because I was a I filed the lawsuit before I knew you. But I'm, because I'm a prophetic dreamer, and it tells me to tell you things. And I sent this into the Supreme Court concerning this case. And it says, and this says, "I'm, I'm in second grade, and I'd say, this is fake news. I was just, the Supreme Court knows about the second shooter." That's the last thing as I wanted to present. I wasn't around. Mary, Mayor Mary, I got you a book, Cat in Hat book, because this is the Cat in Hat thing. It's pictures of all what was on the thing. I want to present that to you. Also, a plaque, certification of achievement, certifies Mary Badami as mirroring the Cat in the Hat Town, just this, by me. And I got you, I was supposed to send it, but that's not, that's not your style. You made me feel like a little kid. And it's a plaque, I mean, it's a picture of, you know, says Mary Badami. And so I, you know, it just, it brightened my day.
Thank you for your comments. And we do not accept things directly really beyond that line. So if you'd like to leave anything, you can do that, or you can leave it on the table over there.
I'll give it to her later.
Okay, thank you very much.
Or I'll just drop it out of there. It's shark, because you're around sharks.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
If I could just make a quick comment, I just thank you from the bottom of my heart. That's very sweet to acknowledge me. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom Pickrow.
Thank you. I'm Tom Pickrow, from Los Gatos Thrives Foundation President. And I'm here to thank the town, the council, and the town administrators for joining the AARP Age-Friendly Network. This was one of the 56 objectives within the senior services roadmap that we did. And I'm thankful for that. The reason was the World Health Organization initiated, and which we belong to, the age-friendly cities, but they had no more budget or money. Whereas AARP was supporting significant and took up the reins to provide support for the age-friendly initiatives. So we thought that was important to do. And just to give one example, last week, the senior agenda of the county Aging Department launched a survey of the community. And that survey was totally provided by the AARP to the county at no cost. And it will have a variety of things, such as to learn about the community, such as housing, transportation, health and wellness, socialization, and inclusion and communication. And I've passed on the information about this survey to our assistant town manager. And I think it's, will be valuable because it's searchable by demographic, by zip code, by communities such as Los Gatos. And so I'm encouraging members of the community to take this for those 45 and older. I'm not sure why 45 was the number picked, but they later become 55 or 65. And this, this is a survey of the, basically, age-friendly community survey. And so I think it's an example of the types of things that AARP has invested in. And it will be very valuable to the, I think, the town, and certainly to Los Gatos Thrives, as we mine and understand what are the needs of our community. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. So I'll ask, is there anyone on Zoom for verbal communications?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so I will close that agenda item. And we will now move to our public hearings. And I understand 17, we're not going to hear. Is that continued to a particular date?
Yes, thank you. That item has, which is the Cypress Way Appeal, has been rescheduled for January 21st.
Okay, thank you. So we will then move on to item number 18. And 18 is an appeal. And so I'm going to read the title first. And I will outline the flow that we're going to follow for an appeal. We will have first the staff report. And then we will have the appellant will have five minutes. The applicant will have five minutes. And then the, we will take public comment. And then there will be an opportunity for the applicant to make additional comments, three minutes. And then the appellant will finish with three minutes. And then we'll close the public hearing. And we'll begin with questions from council members. Of course, council members may ask questions of the applicant or appellant as they're, as they've made their presentation. But we will not get into any deliberation until we've closed the public hearing. So I hope that makes sense. And so let's move to item number 18, which is to consider an appeal of a planning commission decision to approve an architecture and site application for construction of a single-family residence and site improvement, requiring a grading permit on vacant property Zoned R18, located at 15411 National Avenue. So let's go to the staff report now, if you, if you wouldn't mind.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Erin Walters, Associate Planner. The applicant proposes construction of a two, a new two-story, single-family home on a vacant rear lot located at 15411 National. The staff report includes an analysis of the project's compatibility with the immediate neighborhood. On November 13th, the planning commission approved the application with modified conditions. Based on the neighbor's concern, a motion for approval included additional conditions of approval requiring selection of non-allergenic privacy tree species, consideration of window placement, and use of obscured glass on windows to address privacy concerns. And these modified conditions can be found in Attachment 4. The decision of planning commission was appealed on November 25th by an interested person. On the appeal form, the appellant states that there was an error or abuse of discretion by the planning commission based on the following reasons. There are three. The project was inconsistent with the neighborhood compatibility with the residential design guidelines. Incorrect assumption was made that the neighbors would only accept a single-story development, and that the conditions of approval are vague and difficult to enforce. The appellant has provided additional documentation regarding the appeal. These can be found in Attachments 5 and 6, also in yesterday's addendum and today's desk item. The applicant also has provided a response to the appeal. Those can also be found in Attachment 7, yesterday's addendum, and today's desk item. This concludes staff's report, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you. I'll just start with one question. And that is, when the planning commission heard this item in the first place, was there a staff recommendation? And if so, what was it? And what were the, what was the foundation for it?
Yes, thank you for the question. Staff did recommend denial to the planning commission based on concerns due to size, neighborhood compatibility, and consistency with the residential design guidelines.
Thank you. Are there other questions before we hear from the appellant? Okay. So I have the appellant, Christian Yurakariat, and Helen Martinez. And so you have five minutes, please. Thank you for coming up. And if I've mispronounced your name, please correct me right away.
Very well, thank you. Very well. Hi, good evening. My name is Christian Yurakariat. I am the appellant's husband. We both live in the location of 377 Blackwell Drive. We are making this appeal in what the conditions, next slide, please. There should be one before that. The three items that we will discuss is the size that we've mentioned, as well as the privacy issues of both the windows and the landscaping, which we think that the conditions of approvals were insufficient. Next slide, please. Our immediate neighborhood, we live in 377, they're at the top, includes a number of houses built around 30 years ago on Blackwell, which have an extraordinary level of privacy. The houses are very close to each other, but they're actually offset, so there is no windows facing each other. And all the main primary areas for living, backyard, master bedroom, they all look towards the backyard. And that's precisely what causes now the problem with the proposed structure, as you can see there in 15411. Neighbors number one and number two have expressed in writing a support for the appeal. And we have both, one of them in person here will speak later, and then number two, I'm over soon. Next slide, please. The location of the structure, of the proposed structure is the flag lot, is in the middle of the city block, that the flag lot, as you can see there at the top, it overlooks our backyard. You will see the size and the towering, the amount of massing and bulk of the structure. You can see it from all the surrounding backyards, particularly our property and the properties next to us on Blackwell Drive. We believe this violates Section 2.1 of the General Neighborhood Design Principles, which state that that shouldn't be the case, as well as the town code, Section 2940072, about basements. Would you go to the next slide, please? Section 2940072 provides allowance of a basement in order to provide hidden square footage in lieu of visible max. We believe that in this case, the applicants have maximized all three, they have double dipped, if you case, if you want to say it. They have maximized their FAR to 0.3, which is the maximum allowable. They have maximized the garage size to 901 square feet. And they have maximized also the size of their basement to 1,700, which is exactly, I think, the 1711 is the first floor, the basement is 1,700. So they've maximized that allowance of the basement without decreasing the massing of the rest of the structure, being that in the middle of the, of the lot, it's, it looks, you know, very massive and out of scale. Next slide, please. This is what the size of the structure looks like. We're showing their total gross square footage, which comprises both numbers which are countable for the FAR, and also some that are uncountable, like the basement. And as you can see, the gross square footage of 5,841 is about double the size of our ones on Blackwell, which are under 3,500. We don't have basements. And, and this was done, as you can see on the next slide, three levels, again, the same numbers, which are again, they're all allowable numbers. We're not discounting that the numbers meet the town code. But we don't think they meet the spirit or the guidelines within the basement, for example, which is basically decrease the massing, the visible massing by having a large basement. And in this case, that is not happening. Next slide, please. Here's what the structure looks like from a master bedroom. And this is a view from a master bedroom, which, as you will see later, will be unobstructed. There is no privacy, privacy trees being planted. If you go to the next slide, please, that's the view of the structure from the other bedroom upstairs. And again, there will not, there will, there will not be any trees planted in the section of the fence. The section, the trees that we will discuss later are actually on my neighbor to the right, who is actually also here with us today. Next slide, please. We have brought up this of significant privacy concern by the windows to the planning commission, which are shown there. Next two slides, please. Next slide. We gave a recommendation on how to move those lights, how to move those, those windows to minimize the private into the privacy issues. Next slide, please. The commission tried to address our privacy by providing the statement as a condition, with faith to relocate the offending windows, although we believe that's vague and not enough, hard enough, to force a solution to come into place. So that's what the, our second point. One was massing, and the size of the structure. And the second one was the, the conditions to what those windows shall be moved to, for the privacy issues. Next slide, please. One example is recently, a second-story window, Norde's Egress window, where on December 16, we were told that those windows couldn't be moved. On December 2nd, the applicant actually did want an arrangement with us to move the windows. But now, I'm glad I didn't take it, because I didn't know, was not told that the prior agreement was in place not to move it. We think this window can be moved.
Thank you, sir.
I will continue in the second half.
You will have additional time after we hear from the public and the, and the applicant. So would the applicant, please come forward. I have a card, Ramya Mudada. And again, please correct my pronunciation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council and staff. I would first like to congratulate Mr. Huds for his new position as mayor, and Mr. Murray for his new position as vice mayor. And also want to thank you, Ms. Madbadami, for the job well done. With regards to the project, I would like the presentation which I gave. But I can continue. This is the project. We have worked very closely with the staff for over a year to ensure we follow all the town codes and regulations. We are following the residential guidelines. We have proposed, the proposed house is minimum standard size for multi-generational home. We have always said it's a multi-generational home. The newest home built in the surrounding area is 20 years old. The need to, we also need to remember the requirements for older homes were different. In the current, the current needs and the requirements of the family is different. In the past decade or so, we have seen a dynamic shift, where more and more families are looking for multi-generational homes rather than nuclear homes, due to exponential increase in cost of living. Said that, even with our requirement for multi-generational transitional home, we have adhered to our town FAR, calculated and provided by the staff. After hearing the appellant, I'm disheartened by the accusation of something we have no intentions to do, an assumption of wide variety of cooked-up stories, theories without proof and foundation. The numbers which were calculated and showed have no foundation. We want to briefly touch base on the history of the vacant lot. Next slide, please. As appellant has forgotten what there was, what they were used to seeing for over a decade, it was there forever. These structures were there forever. We had inherited a dump with the storage units and tenants. There were a lot of noise as the vehicles constantly went in and out. And sometimes the tenants used to work back in the back late into the night. It took us very long time and money to vacate them and to clear out that area. And in all these years, my neighbors at Blackwell had no complaints about privacy. They have no proof to say, as we as owners, that we have never, we have unwillingly incorporated, or we said, "I'm not going to maintain anything." When the fence fell due to its age, we as good neighbors were there to pay our half of the share. At the same time, when the, when the share, when the big oak tree, which we share with our Blackwell neighbor, was to be trimmed, we got the coat, worked with our Blackwell neighbor, and got it trimmed. My only request at that time was additional time accessibility, because due to accessibility issue and safety was in question. With that proposed project, we have gotten rid of the dump, and we are proposing to add a beautiful house, which will uplift the surrounding areas. Coming back to the project, the appellant has had time for over almost eight months to communicate with us, where we sent them updates, multiple updates with regards to project, and addressing the private issue. But they chose not to. Now she's questioning every aspect of my home. We have support from all our neighborhood, all our National Avenue neighbors. We have letters of support, which is in the addendum, stating that they support our project. We have letters of support, which is in the addendum, stating that they support our project. The LELAC court also supports us, but they want to stand neutral about it. I am just not, they're not, I mean, the numbers, the accusation is really getting to, I'm not able to express in my words. I seriously can't express it, where I am following everything I have done, gone above and beyond to address the privacy issues. In the next three minutes when I get, I want to show what all I have done for my, to address the privacy issues for Blackwell Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Rennie.
I'd like to ask some questions now. First of all, in our report, the addresses for the national neighbors is redacted, so I don't know if it's four blocks down by the hospital, or are they people next door?
People next door, both sides, National and the next door. We have, there's one more flag lot. Both the houses on the flag lot and the big lot right beside me, the lot on my right-hand, left-hand side too, which is on National.
Okay. And my, my second question is about moving the windows. When I read the planning commission transcript, there was lots of discussion about that, and it sounded like some of the windows couldn't be moved and they had to be there. But you said you were going to come back and talk about that, or is it okay to ask a question now, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So could you go through a little more the windows that are the concern, and can they, which ones can be moved or can't be moved, and why?
Okay. I want to take it from the top. There are, I would say there are only two windows which would be seemed as offensive. There are two egress windows, those are the two egress windows. If I may have my slide, I can show you. I think it's the third slide. The two egress windows are the ones which are, which I think is offensive. But right now, after putting the obscure glass, I don't think it would be offensive. But in addition to that, I'm putting privacy trees, right in front, I mean, right there to cover that area. The proposal was to, we thought we could move the first window to the front, but my neighbor on National, which is 15385, who is right beside me on the left-hand side of my property, we were in discussion from before itself, and we had already told him we would not put any window there. Because of my driveway, I can't put any privacy trees.
Could you briefly address councilmember's question, please?
Yeah, the first window, I cannot put it in the front. He's asking why I cannot move it. I cannot put it in the front because, I mean, first I thought, let's see the feasibility.
That basically somebody else would be affected instead?
Yes.
It's a trade-off, who gets affected, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it is more offensive, because I cannot put any trees right in front of my house, because there's a driveway.
What about the window at the back?
Because of the roof of my patio, I can't, there's no space. First thing is that. Second thing is the distance between, if I put the egress window there, the distance between that and my LELAC, LELAC court, LELAC court neighbor, 113 LELAC court neighbor, is very less. Whereas what I have on Blackwell is 40 feet setback, and window to window, it's more than 100 feet.
And, okay, so another question, so on the obscury, obscuring the whole window or just two-thirds of it?
Two-thirds of it, where it's line of sight.
Okay. Third question, the appellant mentioned trees not being in front of their house. Is that correct? Is there a reason they can't also be planted in front of their house?
First thing is because of the driveway, because of the driveway curves. And from my house from there, it was 25 feet, just that's it. And then there's a driveway which is curving over there.
Well, there's, so there's a funny driveway. It looks like there's what used to be a driveway, and there's a gate there, and then there's a big hole that looks like a driveway also.
Yeah, the whole thing would be a driveway, like, which would be curved into. So first thing, there's the driveway issue, and it's right in front of, it starts right in front from the ADU, proposed ADU. So that's one issue. The second issue is, they are proposing putting trees to cover the non-offensive windows too. The non-offensive windows, when I say non-offensive windows, they start at eight feet and end at six feet. You have, I have to jump to look through it. Those are non-offensive. Even then, even then, after the meeting, after the council's recommendation, I'm saying, I'll obscure it. I'm not saying I, I'm going to say I'm obscuring it, and I'll put four-inch opening only. Can be controlled.
Okay. I think I get it, and the mayor wants it concise, so thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind folks that you have an opportunity to present. When you're asked a question, this is for anyone, please try to just respond to that question only and not go into other matters.
I'm sorry about that. Because I had to explain the...
Thank you. Councilmember Badami, I think you had a question.
I do, thank you. So you mentioned you've done everything possible to work with the neighbors and satisfy them and address their concerns. What have you done to address staff's concerns to merit a recommendation of approval rather than a recommendation of denial?
We had worked with the staff to reduce the mass. We reduced it 700 feet before, and we have, whatever staff had recommended, we have done, like, most of it.
If you reduced it by 700 square feet, wouldn't that, if you'd had this 700 square feet, wouldn't that have put you over the FAR?
Yeah, it was over the FAR.
Okay.
And, okay, the ADU was on top.
Okay.
And they recommended to us to put it down. So we did that.
Okay, you answered my question, thank you.
I had a question. You mentioned about the patio roof design. In your letter, you say, "Our current patio roof design doesn't allow for an egress window in the back."
Yes.
Is there a reason why the patio roof design couldn't be changed?
I can change it, but again, I just, as I spoke to Mr. Rob, that if I, even if I move the window there, there are two houses, two other houses which will be affected. One is 369 Blackwell Drive, and one is 113 LELAC Court. And the distance between the LELAC courthouse and my window is way far less than the distance between window to window between Blackwell Drive and me.
Okay, but you didn't address my question, if you don't mind if I asked it again. Why couldn't the patio roof design be changed for a less aggressive, less obtrusive egress In your letter, you say that "our current patio roof design doesn't allow for an egress window in the back."
There's a technical issue. I mean, I want my, that's the architectural element, and I want my patio design to be that way.
Yeah, are you...
My husband.
Okay, and you're, you're the applicant on record, then you can speak. But please keep to the question, yeah.
My name is Venkatesh Batula, I am her husband. So we worked with the architect, and his concern was, there is, we have a minimum slope on the roof, which is bare minimum required, 2.5, and bringing it down further would be, we will lose the warranty of the shingles that we will put on the roof, because the roof warranty cannot be continued if the roof elevation is brought down. So that was the technical reason.
Thank you, very good.
Sorry, I'm not...
No, it's fine. Thank you very much. I don't see any more questions, so I'm going to open this to the public. And I don't see any cards. Would any member of the public like to speak on this matter? You are welcome to come up. And just please state your name, and then please give a card to the clerk after you've spoken. Oh, okay. Am I missing it? Yeah, please state your name.
My name is Venkatesh Upnutla, and I live in 373 Blackwell Drive. My main concern is privacy. I'm like, those are big windows, and we cannot do anything in the backyard. So that's, that's one concern, and it's a huge construction. I mean, like, they have to scale it down. So that, those are the only two points. And maintaining the trees, it's not going to happen. I'm like, I know the previous history, I mean, like, the way we got the response for replacing the fence, as well as some of the issues, it's damaging my property, I mean, like, it's damaging the roof of the shed behind it. And we were sending couple of, I mean, a lot of emails, and they were not responding. I mean, like, it's, it's going to happen in the future also. So I'm, that's my concern. So they have to maintain the trees, and I don't know, I mean, like, it's, it's almost like a stadium behind us.
Yes, Councilmember Rennie has a question.
Yeah, so one of the things, as I've read through this, I've not quite understood. The neighbors are saying two things, that it's too large, but it sounds like the real problem is privacy. So if we were to say, make the top floor smaller, they're still going to need windows that are still going to be facing your house. So I'm, I'm not sure, how does the, how's the size really bother you? It sounds more to me like it's the privacy issue.
My, my argument is, I'm like, moving to the side.
Move the windows to the side?
Side.
Okay.
Not directly to us, I'm like, even the next neighbor is going to say the same thing. So three of us, we, our houses are, I mean, like, built such a way, we won't look at each other. I mean, like, the windows are half set. So it should be like that. I'm like, I don't know why we are building such a big building in the back. I'm like, I'm, I'm really concerned about the construction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more questions, thank you, sir. Any other members of the public we wish to speak on this? Do we have any, any members on Zoom?
We have two, we have one hand raised. Devarth.
Okay, go ahead, please. You can take your seat, thank you.
Hello? Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and planning staffs. My name is Devarth Subramaniam, and I'm also a neighbor residing in 369 Blackwell Drive, whose property shares a fence line with the proposed construction on 151541 National Avenue. I'm here to express my concerns and request a reasonable modifications to ensure that the project aligns with, like, privacy, scale, and compatibility of our neighborhood. I think first one is privacy concerns. The current design includes, like, multi-story windows on the north-facing side that directly overlooks my property, specifically my master bedroom, bathroom, and backyard. And this poses a significant privacy, privacy issue for me. I respectfully request that the condition of approval be amended to require the redesign and repositioning of all offending windows. If they cannot be removed, I believe that relocating problematic living areas such as moving rooms from the north-facing side to the south-facing side on Los Catos Almiron Road and not LELAC Court, where spaces like the sitting area and master closet are currently planned, can address some of our privacy concerns. The second one is, I think, the size and scale. The first floor is 1700 square feet, second floor is 1500, garage is 900 square feet, and it's a total of 4,141 square feet, not including like the 1,700 square feet that's there in the basement. In contrast, my home is like a single-story, 2,500 square feet structured. While the proposed house adheres to the maximum FAR of 0.3, as one commissioner point wisely noted in the previous meeting, a maximum is a maximum, but not a goal. I think Ramya also mentioned about one neighbor in National Avenue. I'd like to point out something in her justification letter, which compares this project to nearby structures, including a large hospital and a two-story building. In my view, these examples don't reflect the unique nature of this lot, which is a flag lot. A more fitting comparison would be the nearby property on 15439. And I respectfully request a reduction in size. And the third point, the last part I wanted to maintain, mention is tree maintenance covenant. Like, I think the trees that they're proposing needs consistent maintenance to remain effective. I kindly request that a covenant be established requiring annual maintenance of the planted trees to ensure that they fulfill their intended purpose over time. In closing, I urge the council to prioritize preserving the character of our neighborhood and the privacy of its residents by considering these modest and reasonable requests. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. So we will now close public comment, and we will go back now with three minutes to the applicant, and then three minutes to the appellant.
Mayor, I'd just like to let you know that Jose Rama is online, who is the appellant.
He's part of the appellant group?
No, applicant.
Applicant group?
Applicant, yes.
He's on standby for technical. The last public comment, where 369 Blackwell Drive, where we are looking into their back, this is the photo submitted, given by them, 369 Blackwell Drive. And you can see, the only thing you can see from his window is the, is the roof of my, what do you call, garage, because of the oak tree, which has actually been trimmed. You cannot see my windows, you cannot see the area at all. There is no way you can see that. If you kindly move to more slightly, right, the before one. The house, 369, is behind the oak tree, literally behind. He cannot, I mean, he can barely see my second floor windows. The oak tree actually acts as a privacy screen, a huge privacy screen, to, you know, to block out the whole second floor. And on top of that, we had a balcony which been removed. We have worked a lot. We have, I have done, gone above and beyond to address, if not just Blackwell Drive, to everyone's privacy issues. I feel like I'm being punished to go to, to be proactive in addressing privacy concerns and being proactive to think about my neighbors. I mean, the 100 feet, 100 feet wall-to-wall distance, you can't see that anywhere in Los Catos. And new developments will happen. You cannot stop, no one can stop that. And I'm sorry, mine is a multi-generational home, it's a transitional, multi-generational home. That's what I have been proposing. And adding a cellar into a non-graded space, into graded space and saying I have a huge house, it's not acceptable. And I think I have addressed every privacy concern, and I have done, gone above and beyond for this. I shifted my whole project from north to south just to address Blackwell Drive's privacy interests. The whole project. Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah, I'll start with Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here, and thanks for your presentation. It's helpful and enlightening. So to some of your points, I have no issues with, with, you know, renovations, the development of new housing, very supportive of multi-generational homes, and I think this, this is looking like it will be a, you know, a good place for... know, a, a good place for, for a multi-generational home. But the, the staff report initially recommended denial, you know, I think primarily because of the, the massing and the size of the home. Um, and, and I wanted to, to get, understand your perspective of if this was an issue for this council, would you be willing to decrease the massing of the home in any areas?
Okay. Respectfully, this is a multi-generational home, and I think it's a standard size as of a thirty-two hundred square feet. And the homes around my area is twenty years more, the latest is twenty years. It's thirty years, forty years, fifty years. Now, while some of them are hundred years. Their requirements were different. And we, I am following my FAR. I made sure my FAR doesn't go, doesn't exceed. I mean, thanks to my staff, not my staff, the town staff, I have made, I have added to their recommendations. Yes, it is larger than the older homes, but their requirement was different, right? My requirement is different. And those are residential guidelines. They are guidelines. They would guide you. And I'm respect, I, I respect them. But again, I don't think so. Our home is a standard-size thirty-two hundred home. If, there is no space, just four bedrooms. And multi-generational home needs a little more space. I think it needs more space.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Badami?
How much space is needed for a multi-generational home, especially when you're gonna put two separate ADUs? And then I, I'm looking at your justification letter, and you state that you need, um, additional space for comfort and functionality? Can you kind of explain that? Because I know of a lot of families that have a lot of family members, for example, in where I live, which is a forty-seven unit townhome complex, and you've got families of five in a sixteen hundred square feet, and they seem to be living comfortably.
I mean, everyone's comfort is different. Everyone's comfort is different. I have two young children who are, do multi-sports. I'm very proud of them. And I have my in-laws. I want to bring them in to, to make sure I take care of them. I want them to have good walking space. I'd want them to have good living space, family room, good space of a family room where we can all sit together and have. And, and again, some people are happy with sixteen hundred, and some people are happy with thirty-two hundred. And I want a thirty-two hundred home where I can live comfortably, where my in-laws can walk around and have enough space, not pick on my kids. That's what I think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I had, I had one que-, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rennie, go ahead.
Um, so I'm always in problem-solving mode here. Um, one question I had is, if you could push the house towards the back of the flag lot, I noticed when I went and looked at it, and by the way, Mayor, you should do disclosures, um, when I went and looked at it, that house had no windows. It, you know, if you could push back the house towards that, then the offending windows would be more in line with the trees that you're able to plant. Are you able to push, and feel free to ask your husband and consultants, but can you push your house further back towards, so that it's more behind where the trees will be?
Then I'll be encroaching into the setbacks. Twenty-feet setback, I'll be encroaching into that.
So you're at the, you're at the, the required setback right now?
Yes. Everything is, uh, like, right setback. The only huge setback we have is towards the Blackwell Drive, which is forty-feet setback. We have a forty-feet setback. And on top of it, hundred, hundred feet, window to window.
Okay, thank you.
Is it pertinent to that question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, yes. Hi, my name is Jose Rama. I'm a project designer for this, uh, this house itself. I don't even have a couple of minutes to just discuss, a little brief discussion. Uh, I'm gonna go back to that, um, the privacy factor. Um, we have addressed multiple factors here. By having this diffused glass all throughout, basically, that facade itself, um, the windows, the windows that are egress are the minimum requirements that we have to accommodate that exiting for fire. Uh, by we, uh, we orientating these windows, every other neighborhood is gonna have the same problems they have. This is urban living. This is not a, a two or three-acre lot that you could have a distance away. We're happy that we have about a hundred feet away from that, from property to property, basically, from window to window. Um, regarding that, um, relocation of that, we can't relocate a window towards the back because we are limited on a, on the roof slope. The, the roof slope give us the, enough accommodation for us to e-, exit that area. So we cannot change that slope any more than it, than it is right now. The warranty expire, will expire if we do not have the, uh, over that two-point-five slope percentage. Uh, regarding, um, the, uh, re- reorientation of the, of the house being pushed back, we can't do that. We are limitation on setbacks. Addition to that, we are following all the design guidelines, the formula that the city of Los Catos has provided for FAR. We are following those recommendations. We are, uh, also lot coverage, we, we are under. So we are following every exactly recommendation from the design guidelines and the town guidelines. Um, in addition to this, the basement, the cellar does not count towards any, an FAR. There is no, only if it is over that three-feet threshold that we are not. We are only a foot and six inches above that grade level. So therefore, that discussion of the basement should be obsolete entirely from this. Um, that's a cellar. It's not counted towards the FAR. It's clearly stated there. The tree, the tree dividing, that tree is dividing, the last person who spoke is between his property and their property. So the maintenance has to be taken care of both sides. Um, you know, but that said, um, and then, uh, the second story, our second story is smaller on the width there, there, their adjacent properties. They have a forty-four feet wide when we only have thirty-seven. So our footprint on the second story is more, is much smaller than theirs, all three of them.
If I could ask a question, thank you. Um, you mentioned that, um, the project complies with all of the residential design guidelines. Um, and I'm referring to the table on page six of eleven in the Planning Commission report, um, that shows the sizes of the residence, not only the FAR, but the square footage. Um, so in what way does a resident, a residence that's twenty-eight percent larger, um, than the larger group, leaving out the three, uh, smaller ones, how, how is that, uh, how does that comply with the guidelines?
We are, we are following the, the design guideline, the formula that the city of Los Catos has provided us with. So we are following those requirements. They did this house back in two thousand, in, obviously nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-eight. Those design guidelines were not implemented at that time. And if they were, okay, they bought this as a secondary, they did not build this house. This is basically, uh, a person who be, who designed it with a restraint of cost, in constructing cost. They, their house could be up to thirty-two hundred square feet. The calculation is there. If we do the calculation by square footage of the, of the lot, their property, their property could go up to thirty-one to thirty-two hundred square feet. We are following the design guidelines. We, we are not derailing ourselves entirely away from what they could have been provided. If they knock down their homes, they could do as thirty-two hundred square feet.
Yes, thank you. Um, I was referring to the compatibility with the neighborhood. Um, anyone else have a question? Okay, thank you. Then we would ask the, uh, thank you, and, uh, we will ask, um, the appellant to come forward, and you have, uh, three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, can we go back to my presentation, please? Um, I'm gonna try to complete it, but also address some of the, yeah, I'm gonna address some of the issues, um, that were there.
Yeah, you can just wait until she brings the presentation up. Thank you.
With all due respect, Commissioners, um, may we request to have, um, an extra minute or two? We just got several minutes of presentation from the applicant's side.
Um, there may be questions for you which would extend the time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, it's up, okay.
Thank you. Um, okay, so, um, again, I just wanna address a few points before we get there, right? They, they mentioned the numbers calculated. We're not trying to say they don't meet the numbers. I think it's clear, but we're trying to say, the numbers are there, they're accurate, but it, uh, it's a problem of sizing, of not following the guidelines for the basement, where they have maximum in the basement, maximum in the FAR, and this has caused, actually, just because it's more comfortable for her, um, you know, it's basically our, our privacy that is at stake. Um, so, uh, let's go to this. I like this slide. Uh, this slide, as it shows, the move of the window from the north wall to the east wall, which was proposed to me, uh, as an arrangement a few days ago, before I found out there was a prior arrangement by somebody else. I think that, uh, it could still be moved. Um, if you look at the way that the, the, the yellow arrow pointing into our, into our, uh, master bedroom, if we move the, the, the window into the east side, it will face not the neighbor on National, which they claim they have an agreement, it will face the front lot house, which they also own. Um, the, the vision towards the neighbor on National would be forty-five degrees, which is exactly the same what they have today. So facing north, they have a forty-five-degree view into the neighbor on National. If they change it to the east side, still a forty-five degree to the neighbor on National, right? So it doesn't get worse. It's not worse for them if they move that window, uh, from the north side into the east side. Let's go on to the next slide, please. Uh, well, let's go actually a couple of slides before that I, that I want to cover, uh, which always have shown significant privacy concerns for many of the windows. Uh, the applicant kept saying that only two windows are causing really offending, because that's her opinion. But we have said clearly in our, uh, letters and this is slide number eleven, a few slides back, there are many windows that I think are offensive. If you go to the actual photos on slide, uh, ten, slide ten and nine, uh, before that, just before that, you will see, for example, that there are many windows that are seen and obstructed from master bedroom, including the garage windows. If you look at the garage windows, which are under the triangular portion there, there are garage windows that can be seen from the master bedroom above the lattice. And again, given there are no trees there, because they don't wanna move their driveway, and their driveway could be moved, for example, by getting an easement from the front lot, which by the way, they also own. So they could have an easement to move that driveway and plant our trees, our privacy trees. Uh, let's go on to the next slide, please. I wanna go, finish with the, our concerns. Slide, um, number, number seventeen. Slide seventeen, please. Um, seventeen shows the position of the trees. Those are the only privacy trees we're gonna get. So nothing that covers our view from our, um, from our, um, bedrooms. Uh, they are all facing my neighbor next door, Mr. Venkat here. None, none of those trees are facing me. So every morning I wake up and I'm gonna have this house looking at me, um, with no trees. Um, anyway, we are hope, um, respectfully request and, and hopefully that this, uh, us, that this appeal be approved, so that they can build a, say, two-story house for, but that's just one that's more adequate with our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are, are there questions? Vice Mayor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, somewhat similar question, um, that I asked the applicant. So it, it sounds like a lot of the concerns from the neighborhood in general are about the, you know, privacy and massing. And it seems like the, the privacy concerns would be alleviated potentially by decreasing some of the massing. Do you think that's fair? And, and are there, if this were to be sent back to the Planning Commission, um, are there particular areas of the project where you could see, uh, massing improvements?
Yes, um, I can, I can, um, and feel free to chime in. Um, I think that by decreasing the massing on the second floor, uh, it will decrease the number of windows that are also intrusive. We don't only have the egress wind, the two egress windows that we're discussing left and right. We also have other windows that face our property. Uh, one that's called storage unit upstairs, next to the stairs. I'm not sure what a storage unit is doing there. You have these big windows in the garage. Why do we have windows in the garage? Eliminate the windows in the garage or move them to the front. Um, uh, we have also a storage room upstairs. We have a huge garage storage unit that looks like a bedroom, but it's, it's actually, uh, separate from the main garage, but it's part of the garage, but it has a window. We're not eliminate that. We've shown all those, uh, slides, all those, um, windows in the slide. We think that also some of those windows could be moved into the south side. For example, the south side, the, the south side has a master bedroom and a master bathroom, and then it has a sitting area with a window, a sitting area upstairs, at the top of the stairs, a sitting area and a huge master closet. Why not convert that area into a, a bedroom so that the, the window can face in the other direction and put maybe the closet in our side with our window, or, or, or the sitting area with our window, or a very high window that's not an egress window facing us? We think there are ways, creative ways that the design can be modified to decrease the massing and/or to decrease the privacy concerns.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other council members have questions? Yes, Councilmember Risto?
Um, yeah, I don't wanna get too into the windows, but the egress windows, which, you know, obviously are necessary, I believe, weren't they intended to be frosted?
Um, yes, they, the, the windows are intended to be frosted in the bottom half. Of course, frosting the windows doesn't help us if they open the window, especially in the nice weather we have here. If the windows are open, and which is something that psychologically, we will always be thinking, are the windows open or not? Uh, then there's also the, the right amount of frosting has to be, has to be provided.
Right, I understand. I, I, thank you.
And not the film.
Yeah, I have, I have a frosted window on my bathroom, so I know what that means.
Yeah, they can be removed, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I, I wanna add one more thing.
No, that was my only question.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you.
About frosted windows, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? Um, I, I had one, and that regarding the numbers. Um, the applicant indicated that some of the numbers were incorrect. Um, I was not at the Planning Commission meeting. I have read the report from the, that went to the Planning Commission, and I referenced page six of eleven, where there's a table of, uh, sizes. Um, do you have any reason to think those are not correct?
Well, um, they're the same number. So, um, so we're not claiming in any part of our presentation that the numbers are, and, you know, erring can correct be technically about the language mainly. So we're not arguing that the numbers are incorrect and that they do not meet the, uh, the town code. Um, and the house and the garage, which are the countable numbers for the FAR, are correct. It's thirty-two forty for the house, it's nine hundred and one for, uh, for the garage. They're both maximized, but they meet, they meet the, the town code. And then we have the basement that, uh, is, as I said, the seventeen hundred that we use to calculate what we call the gross square footage, which is really how we compare to the other house. Because the fact that they included the basement that is intended to be there to decrease visible mass, to me, that, that is relevant. To say they have all this living space that they created, double-dipping into all the policies and without taking into account our concerns for privacy and massive.
Thank you. I'm, I'm aware of that part of the, of the design guidelines. Any other question? Yes, Councilmember Rennie?
Um, so the applicant, when I asked about the trees, said there was driveway and there would, they had intended to put an ADU, I guess, where trees could go. If they put an ADU, won't that provide, it's gonna have a roof on it, so isn't that gonna provide a blocking, um, like a tree?
Well, if they, if, oh, slide number ten, please? Possible? Yeah, slide number ten or seventeen, yeah. Or set, which one?
I'll take this quick moment to just, uh, voice, um, about a picture being taken of his private backyard. It's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
For you while they're looking for the slide, that he's very concerned about his private backyard being published here.
Sir, we've already taken your testimony and we're focused on, uh, the appellant right now.
Because the picture came up, it reminded me. Here we are.
So my concern is when So, my concern is, when I look at that, I can't understand why the driveway is in this area. Is this where the ADU's going to be? And wouldn't the ADU do some of the blocking for you?
So, well, the ADU, if they place it there, and if they may change their mind, they may put it back maybe on the roof, where they intended to put it originally, way back in the design, but we have no say on the ADU, that maybe they are or not. But even if the ADU provides a little bit of a roof next to our fence, as you can see, we will still see the second floor from our second-floor window. I don't think the ADU will be that high.
So, the windows are also on the second floor, and so the ADUs are up to 16 feet. It wouldn't be the right height for that. And then we have-- see the circle on the top right? That is the entire area that's not covered by trees. Of course, the driveway, the flagpole of the corridor, the flagpole, that's actually the driveway, is at the end of that red zone. And as my husband said, there could be an easement before-- between the two lots. We also understand if the trees don't go all the way there, but they should at least cover to, especially where those garage windows are that overlook our downstairs bedroom, our upstairs bedroom. Everything can be seen from there. There's just no coverage. And so, this project as it is, we have addressed privacy concerns. We've asked, you know, between all the neighbors, we've asked, move the bedrooms to the other side. There's two egress windows on the other sides that they have. There's egress windows downstairs that are not used. So, you know, we've asked in many ways, our privacy concerns are valid, and the Planning Commission tried to address them, and--
Thank you.
It's hard enough.
I think you've addressed Councilmember Rennie's question. Are there other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
We will now close the public portion of the hearing, and we will move to council. And first, maybe we could see if there are any disclosures from council members. Anyone? Councilmember Badami?
I would say that I've been out to the property and walked it, and I need to disclose that I've actually viewed it and taken things into consideration.
Councilmember Ristow?
Yes, I visited the property after the Planning Commission decision, and then just recently.
Thank you. Councilmember Rennie?
Yeah, went out to the property yesterday.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I also visited the site.
Okay, and I also visited the site as well. So, at this point, we'd like to give the council opportunity, and I would suggest maybe focus on clarifying questions before we move into opinions or motions. So, Councilmember Rennie?
Yeah, so I have lots of questions for staff, actually, because often applicants and appellants tell us things that aren't necessarily the true facts. So, I wanna verify, on the back setback, is it true the house can't be moved any further to the back of the lot?
That is correct.
Okay. On the driveway, I can't find in the drawings really showing me what the driveway looks like. Is there a drawing number that helps me understand that better? Is there more driveway than it needs to be? I can understand that you need the driveway to come down and turn, but is there some next to the garage also that's preventing the trees?
Yes, and if the clerks could pull up the Exhibit 11, which are the development plans, Page Sheet A1.0, that's the site plan. So, that provides a visual of how the driveway works. So, you just-- once that gets up, we can look at it, but basically--
So, while we're--
Yep.
Then the connected question is really about trees, and what did the Planning Commission say? I see the applicant giving us-- or, no, the appellant giving us specifically where they think the trees are going, but I didn't see that in the Planning Commission discussion. So, what is staff's understanding of where trees could go?
So, what was proposed and what was presented to Planning Commission is shown in Sheet A1, and that does have five trees along that side property that abuts the Blackwell properties. We could-- you could expand trees, definitely, along that corridor if they'd like.
And I'm trying to remember the reading through it. So, the reason the trees weren't extended was because of a plan for an ADU? Was that discussed, or--
No, there was no discussion about limiting that. It was just what was proposed in the plans. So, I believe there would be opportunity there to expand trees along that fence line.
And so, that's-- we can't really see the driveway. I'm assuming it doesn't extend past the garage, then?
If we could go to Sheet A1.0, right there. So, you can see along the top of the description-- or along the fence line at the very top, you can see the proposed five trees, privacy trees, and then there's just low vegetation depicted all along that fence line to the front of the property on National.
Is there a reason the driveway needs to go all the way to the fence, and there couldn't be room to put trees in there?
So, actually, there is a landscape buffer shown right there. You can see that hatched pattern along that top property line. So, there is an opportunity to plant trees there.
These size trees, the cypress, whichever kind of cypress it was, that grow fast, four feet a year?
So, two things. One, the Planning Commission talked about modifying that tree species due to some allergy concerns from a neighbor. So, at this time, there hasn't been a new tree selected for that location, so that has not been explored with regards to size.
One question I just wanted to verify. So, the ADU is not part of this application. That's gonna happen later.
That's correct. The junior ADU and ADU are not a part of this application because it's ministerial and handled through a building permit. So, at this time, it's shown that way, but we have not received that application in building permit form.
And one last one, if I could, Mayor. On moving the back window, they're giving the reason that the slope of the roof causes a problem. Does that make sense to staff?
So, planning staff can't speak to that. I'm not sure if building staff has taken a look at that, but on the plans, it does show a 5% slope on the rear, so we have not explored that technically.
Mr. Gray?
Yes, Robert Gray, Chief Building Official. Thanks for the question. Just in-- after that comment came up, I kinda looked at the drawings, and it is a very low-slope roof. Once it gets lower than that, there would have to be an alternative roof covering on that. You can go down to a flat roof. Obviously, we see that all over town with a small slope, but a typical conventional shingle, as proposed, they've got it as low as they can.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one quick follow-up with regard to the ADU. I understand the ADUs are not part of the application. Is there any ability to require a resident to build an ADU for privacy reasons or other?
There is none.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Ristow?
Yeah, I guess going along with the ADU, I know that's ministerial. Do we have rules about where the windows can be on the ADU? So, if an ADU is potentially gonna screen windows from the house, is it gonna create more windows closer?
What I'm aware is that we do not regulate window location for privacy for ADUs.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I had one other one, and that relates to the information that was presented at the Planning Commission, and I referred to a table in the Planning Commission report of the eight properties that were identified as part of the immediate neighborhood. I looked not only at the largest, but I also looked at the average for compatibility, and even dropping out three of them, 15385 National, 15415, and 15424, it looked to me like the average of the rest of them, which were mostly newer homes, were 28% larger-- the project was 28% larger than the average in the neighborhood. I don't know whether you've done that, but is that-- does it sound right, looking at that table?
Staff hasn't run those calculations. We just do compare the immediate neighborhood and identify which is the next-largest, but there is quite a range there in the immediate neighborhood, from smaller to larger.
Okay, thank you. And then with regard to the FAR, looking at the average FAR, it looked like the project was 38% larger than the average FAR in the neighborhood. Again, asking, you probably don't run that number, but I'm using the numbers that are in the staff report.
Yes, staff has not run that number, but it is-- there is one larger FAR within the immediate neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Rennie?
I missed another question I had, which is a little more in digging-in question. We've-- for neighborhood compatibility, we used to, and I can't remember if we're still using-- I think we call it a 5-1-1 comparison. Is that the right title, 5-1-1?
We typically do five across the street and two on each side, unless they're on a corner property.
And do we do anything behind the house in that comparison?
No, we do not.
So, on National, right across the street is a very large commercial building, and the next buildings to the left are really on Soto Court, which is a very long, large apartment or condo complex. So, when I look at neighborhood compatibility on the street, I don't see us comparing the fact that across the street is very large, and that's normally what we do in neighborhood compatibility on the 5-1-1.
That is correct, and so if you look at the table on page 6 of 11, it does show-- it does indicate those properties, but because of their different uses and they're just not compatible with comparing it to a single-family home, we've left that blank.
Yeah, I can see that it's not a home, but it's what's in the neighborhood, and when we're talking about massing and size, what's across the street is fairly large. That's my point.
I had one other question. The applicant referred to multi-generational home. Does town code specify or accommodate multi-generational? And if so, what type of-- what residential type would that be?
So, the town code permits single-family homes in this zone, and we don't regulate how many people live there or where they sleep. It's really just that they have one kitchen. In this case, they are proposing two additional ADUs, but that isn't a part of this application. That all has to do with numbers of kitchen.
Thank you. Councilmember Ristow?
Thank you. I don't know if you can answer this, but is it true that the newest house nearby is 20 years old? I mean, it didn't look like a new-- a very new neighborhood to me, but--
There was an addition made down the street. That's the largest FAR-- I'm sorry-- square footage in the neighborhood, but that was just an addition that was done, I think, in 2018.
Okay, thank you. 2008?
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll move to comments or discussion or motion. Councilmember Badami?
Thank you. As far as what's in a neighborhood and a commercial use, a commercial use might look like a large building to compare it to, but commercial uses, they're usually Monday through Friday from 9 to 5. A residence is operational 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so it's apples to oranges. Now, I read the transcripts of the Planning Commission meeting, the staff report, as well as our town governing documents. This was a split vote, absent two members of a full seven-member commission that was operating as a commission of five. What stood out to me was the staff recommendation of denial. I have high regard for our town staff. We hire them for professional expertise and for recommendations based on our town guiding documents. The denial was based for several reasons. Neighborhood compatibility, that being the largest residence in the immediate neighborhood by 511 square feet, the largest garage in the immediate neighborhood by 124 square feet, failure to accept town architect recommendations, number one and number five, and inconsistency with residential design guidelines. Our town residential design guidelines provide purpose and expectations to residents and developers, and are applicable to residential development requiring discretionary approval. And what we would be doing here tonight is discretionary approval if we do approve. Now, when I looked at those transcripts, Commissioner Barnett referenced Section 2.1 of the guidelines in his reason for denial, and I'm gonna quote that section. Residential development shall be similar in mass, bulk, and scale to the immediate neighborhood. Consideration will be given to the existing FARs, residential square footages, and lot size in the neighborhood. It doesn't get any more clear than that. It doesn't say should, it says shall and will. Other sections warranted additional deliberation, and I'm gonna walk through those. 1.4, Community Expectations. Homes will respect the scale and character of their immediate neighborhoods. Section 1.6, How to Read Your Neighborhood. A house designed that may be appropriate in one neighborhood may not be appropriate in another neighborhood. This is a flag lot. I mean, it's impacting several neighbors. It's quite unusual to have a development like this in a flag lot. Section 2.1, General Neighborhood Design Principles. Relate a structure's size and bulk to those in the immediate neighborhood. Section 2.3.1, Form in Mass. If a two-story house is proposed in a one-story neighborhood, the house shall be designed to blend with the smaller homes. Section 2.3.6, Locate Second Floor Mass to Minimize Impacts on Adjacent Neighbors. Section 2.5.2, Design with Sensitivity to Adjacent Neighbors. Houses should be planned with an awareness of the impacts which they will have on the privacy of neighbors. Section 3.3.2, Height, Bulk, and Scale. For neighborhoods dominated by one-story homes, an effort should be made to limit the house to one-story in height, or to accommodate second-floor space within the roof form, as is common in craftsmen's style. Provide substantial side setbacks for the entire house. Provide substantial second-floor side setbacks. Section 3.4.2, Minimize the Visual Impact of Larger Garages. Three-car garages may not be appropriate in most neighborhoods. Section 3.1.1.2, Minimize Privacy Intrusions on Adjacent Residences. Windows should be placed to minimize views into living spaces and yard spaces near neighboring Yes, this application adheres to allowable FAR. It utilizes allowable below-grade square footage of 1,700 square feet, not counting towards the FAR, and includes a second story in a predominantly one-story neighborhood. The town guidelines are very clear in that the town recognizes and welcomes the need for change, but in a manner that's respectful of the scale, texture, and character of the community's individual neighborhoods and unique setting. This is a unique setting, and we still have to look to the whole purpose of below-grade square footage, and that's to provide hidden square footage in lieu of visible mass. I cannot make the finding that this is compliant with our residential design guidelines. I'm anxious to hear from my fellow council members, but I would support granting the appeal and remanding the application back to the Planning Commission with specific direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Rennie?
So, I'll make some contrary viewpoints to that. So, what we have to do here is decide if the Planning Commission made-- So what we have to do here is decide if the, if the planning commission made an error, and that's what, the job of the appeal is to decide whether they made it an error. We know that all of the objective standards have been met. There's some subjective in whether it fits into the neighborhood or not. As I started to ask questions, I could make the argument that it, you know, many of the arguments I just heard actually, I, in my opinion, aren't valid. You know, it was mentioned, single, should be single-story in a single-story neighborhood. Well, the two neighbors that are complaining the loudest have two-story buildings, and if you go over on Blackwell Drive and look at their front yards, they look quite massive from the front. And that's part of the problem, is they've got a two-story that's going to look into a two-story. So things about, you know, one-story neighborhood, I don't think that is a valid point at all, and several of the points were along those lines. As I said, the fact that something's not being used doesn't, you know, the, the neighborhood compatibility is, it could be use compatibility, but we're, normally we're talking about visual compatibility, and so that's really the mass, and what we always look at is what's across the street. Well, there's very large buildings across the street, so the argument that this is much larger than anything else, it has some, some counterargument that has, you know, some, some subjectivity to it. It's hard for me to say, it's absolutely wrong to say it doesn't fit in because you have such large mass. When we have larger masses, we ask for things like articulation on the house, and if you look at this house, there's three different roof lines, the garage is broken in a different point, so they've done a lot of things to break up the mass. We often want, if it's large, to have some setbacks further from the street. Well, this is actually way back and has a house from it. Our, our normal guidelines, that's why I asked the question, our normal guidelines don't even consider the house behind, so in this case, we're trying to make houses behind, and I understand, but from a size perspective, I think the only real question is, if we make it smaller, can we get rid of some windows? So it comes down to a privacy issue, and so in my view, I, I can't say they made an error, they made a judgment that it's, the size and massing is okay. Whether they completely addressed the privacy issues, kind of another question, as you saw some of my, my questions about could there be more trees, and there was some question about the direction of, of maybe whether the windows moved or not, and I'm, I didn't get a chance to ask staff that question, but there's, so in my mind, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they erred on the massing side, because that's a subjective which you can argue both ways. Have they done a good enough job on the, on figuring out the privacy? I'd like to hear a little more from my councilmembers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go back to Councilmember Badami and then Councilmember Risto.
I have a question for staff, and it used to be, if I'm reading the town code correctly, when we get an appeal, I don't think we have to find error or abuse of discretion when I read the town code. That was eliminated when we modified the ordinance.
I think there's a special appeal provision for appeals of architectural and site applications, and it does look like it's a two-pronged test, and so in order to overturn a decision, the council would find that the planning commission either made an error or abused its discretion, or the second prong is... I'm looking at 2920.295, and the second prong is that the decision was not supported by substantial evidence in the record.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you for adding that, because that's my concern with the substantial information that was in the record. Thank you.
Councilmember Risto, I think you were raising your hand.
Thank you. I mean, I'm, I'm listening to these points. I mean, first of all, I think when the town council receives any of these appeals, my feeling is it's the planning commission's job to make these decisions, and so it takes a lot for me to overturn a planning commission decision. I think, I think it was Councilmember Rennie who brought up the question of, you know, is it the second story? Is it the privacy? A lot of discussion was given around windows, and what I reflect on, I mean, I look at my own experience, I live in a property that's only 50 feet wide, is our entire property, and so all the windows on my house are close to my neighbors, and I can tell you, we don't stare into each other's houses. In fact, in the daytime, when it's sunny outside, nobody can see inside. There's reflection on the glass. At night, I have discovered from across the street, you can see straight into my bathroom, it's an upper window, but I have curtains, and our biggest egress window is next to our shower, and I don't want curtains there, so we have frosted glass. They're double-hung, so when we open that window, we open the top of it, because the bottom would not be at an appropriate height. But, you know, I think windows serve a really important purpose, and I don't want to start messing around with people's windows too much. They bring light in, they bring air in. I would hate to start manipulating somebody's architecture to make a space unlivable. I think it's a very big concession. I was happy to see that the applicant was agreeing to frosted windows, because when you buy them that way, that's how they're always going to be. You would have to buy new windows to change it. And so it lets light in, it doesn't let all the light in, your plants aren't going to be super happy right next to there, but it provides privacy. I think that the setbacks, you know, I'm trying not to look at this personally, but the setbacks here are pretty big, and I think that a lot of the privacy issues can be cured with plantings, and I think that's where some of the attention should be. I don't want to look at a project as whether it's multi-generational or not. As a single-family home, I don't want to make a judgment that a single, a couple, two people don't deserve to have the same-sized house as multi-generational. I'm trying to make this decision based on the merits of the construction, the merits of the house, the merits of the location. I get that one of the commissioners said that maximum FAR is a max, not a target, and I get that. On the other hand, it is the max, and so it must be allowable. If we can never hit the max, then we should recalculate and go down to what the limit is. And then finally, regardless of the, how the planning commission arrived at their decision, whether it was unanimous or split, the majority is the voice. And so, you know, I did look at the comments, I did take those into account, but I feel like a lot of accommodations have been made, and I don't think the planning commission erred. I've certainly seen other cases where a project comes forward and the staff recommends approval, and then the planning commission denies it, and then it gets appealed, and the staff goes with, you know, what the decision was. So, you know, these things can tilt on things. The recommendation not to approve was based on the fact that the house was larger, it's in a really difficult place. When you're in a flag lot, you are suddenly in the middle of everybody. But if I were the one building the house, I'd be more concerned about my own privacy. You've got eight houses looking at you, and they've only got one additional house. So I would be in favor of more plantings, and I'm having a really hard time finding a compelling reason to overturn the planning commission's decision.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. So I spent a lot of time thinking about this. I've, so, thinking about, you know, the planning commission and staff recommendations, my thoughts are, while this development does come in just under the FAR, it is more than 500 feet larger than the, the, you know, comparable homes in the neighborhood being closer to 2,700 square feet. The, the staff report says, and Councilmember Badami mentioned this as well, the proposed project would result in the largest residence in terms of square footage and the largest garage in terms of square footage in the immediate neighborhood. And the staff, the original staff recommendation to the planning commission said that staff recommends denial of the architecture and site application based on concerns related to size, neighborhood compatibility, and consistency with the residential design guidelines. I generally agree with that assessment. I feel that a lot of the privacy and neighborhood compatibility concerns would be resolved by lessening the second-story massing, and I know that I talked and thought about what, you know, the council's role is here, because we do have to find that, that there was an error made by the planning commission, which, which is significant, but, but I think, in my opinion, that could be an error in judgment and, and decision-making, and, and so I also think that the applicant is not complying with the, with the intent of town code by maximizing the size of the cellar and basement without minimizing the massing of the overall structure. I think that's why we don't count it in, in FAR, is because it's, the, the overall structure is supposed to be made smaller by the cellar, which, which is not the case here, that the FAR is maximized, you know, without counting the, the basement. And so I think generally, I'm very supportive of, you know, the idea of multi-generational homes. I think that the general design of this home and the layout with the addition of the ADU is not objectionable, but I think in its current form, this application is not compatible with the other homes in the neighborhood. I think, I don't necessarily think huge changes need to be made, but I think that with some thoughtful reductions to the second-story massing that decrease the total FAR, this application would be significantly more compatible with the neighborhood, and I would feel much more comfortable approving it. And so I'm generally supportive of the direction Councilmember Badami said, making the recommendation to remand this back to the planning commission.
I wanted to add a couple, a couple of comments. First of all, I think that it's, it's, it's very valuable to have multi-generational housing, and that the, the design of this home is generally a good design. However, I think that it does not comply with the residential design guidelines, and I think that there was perhaps some information that wasn't provided to the planning commission regarding the percentages of the average in the neighborhood versus this. But I also want, you know, understand that we're in a, a challenging period where in order for single-family home construction to make financial sense, it pushes up against our design guidelines, and so, you know, it, it presents the case that maybe we should take another look at our design guidelines and recognize multi-generational, and recognize, when we're looking at neighborhood compatibility, the timeframe in which homes were built. But unfortunately, our guidelines do not address those issues, and so we have to, to go with the guidelines as, as they're written, and I also believe that, that this home exceeds the neighborhood in, in square footage and in bulk and mass. I do think there may be, again, something to the idea that residential homes could be compared to commercial in a neighborhood, but that's not our residential design guidelines. It compares residences to residences. It doesn't compare residences to hospitals or to bowling alleys or things like that. And so it's, it's done for the reason of ensuring that both people who are looking to develop and provide for their families do that in balance with the expectations of folks who have residences already, and so it's a, it's a matter of balancing. And so I'm not sure we're at the point where we have a motion, but, but my, my sense is that this project could be improved in a way that would meet the needs of multi-generational and also needs of privacy, perhaps by reducing the size, moving some windows to the side, doing, perhaps looking at the storage room upstairs, the windows in the garage, and maybe requiring that some windows are non-operating. But those are all ideas that kind of came out during the hearing, which I would put into the category of improving the project to better comply with the town's residential design guidelines. Councilmember Badami?
I'll try a motion. So I move to provide direction to staff to prepare a resolution, to grant the appeal, and remand the application back to the planning commission with specific direction. That direction being, reduce the square footage of the residence to an amount not exceeding the largest in the immediate neighborhood; reduce the square footage of the garage to an amount not to exceed the largest in the immediate neighborhood; adopt the remaining two recommendations of the town architect, which is number one and number five, I can read those; provide an under-the-eve entry in lieu of the proposed stone tower; and provide projecting trim at the second-floor line around all sides of the home; the number and location and species of the privacy trees shall be mutually agreed upon by the neighbors; work with the neighbors and town staff to minimize and relocate windows to mitigate privacy impacts to the neighbors; and use obscure glass to address privacy at impacted locations.
Is there a second before we discuss?
And then if, if staff prepares that resolution, my recommendation would be that it comes to the council on the consent calendar on January 21st.
Thank you.
I'll second for discussion, but I do have some, some issues with the motion as made.
Okay. Do you want to elaborate on those now?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. So I, I agree with, with the intent. I would not want to be so prescriptive as to say that it cannot, that it has to be a certain FAR. So, so I would, I would be more comfortable with, and we could get, you know, into the numbers, but, but I would be more comfortable with reducing the overall square footage and, you know, by maybe at least 300 square feet, but I don't, I don't know, I, I think that by forcing the applicant to go down to 2729, we might be hurting the, the design of the home in, you know, what I would consider to be unfair ways. So I wouldn't want to be so prescriptive as to say it has to go down to the, to that number, but I would be supportive of, of a motion that generally says decreasing the massing and square footage.
Before I move on, does Councilmember Badami wish to make any change at this point, or do you want to let us continue discussion?
Well, I'll just comment on that if you were, are you saying, being prescriptive by reducing it by 300 square feet? Because I find that to be prescriptive, and that would bring it down to 2940, which, if I brought it down to the largest home, it would be 2729? Are you just saying you don't want the 300 less, just leave it up to reduce the mass, which I think we're going to probably end up with a back and forth?
Sure. Mayor, are you okay with me responding to that? So I, I am worried about, I'm worried about being overly prescriptive, so I was throwing out 300 as a general, you know, maybe a base for reducing the square feet, but, but I, I don't know. I agree that, that if we're asking to reduce the square feet, we should, you know, have a certain expectation of what that is, but I don't think that it's fair to ask them to go to 2729.
Okay, we'll leave that for... Councilmember Rennie?
And in my opinion, I think we're letting our own personal prejudices decide what
In my opinion, I think we're letting our own personal prejudices decide what the solution should be. In my opinion, the problem is the privacy, and you're making a motion that's prescriptive on size, but doesn't even, well, there was a little bit, but it's not focused on fixing the real issue here. You know, a lot of times, if you have an issue, you come up with 14 things that help maybe get rid of that issue, and you got to drill down to what really solves the issue. I think you should be making a motion that directs the planning commission to figure out how to solve the privacy issue, and you could put the suggestions in of reducing some of the second-floor massing so that there's less windows, or something to that effect. But if you just tell them to reduce the size, I mean, the motion that we got, why bother sending it to planning commission? Just make that the approval.
I just wanted to add a comment. Councilmember Rennie, you have a lot of experience, but I would caution to stay away from personal characterizations that get into sort of ad hominem. So describing councilmembers' personal preference, I think, gets into that area, so I would advise, you know, to think about that. Councilmember Risto?
Yeah, I was thinking, if we're trying to address privacy, like I said, I think it's going to have to be trees. If the size of this home is decreased, there's still going to be windows. And there's literally one house that's 100 feet away that's concerned about privacy. So I don't understand if one window is a privacy issue, or five windows are a privacy issue. Reducing by one window, it's still the same thing. So I'm not, I'm just not seeing that this is going to go anywhere.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Badami, and then Vice Mayor Moore.
Now, I would just like to clarify for the record that I do not apply personal prejudices in making my decisions. I rely upon town code, residential design guidelines. That's how I make my decisions. And I quoted several sections of the residential design guidelines to back up my decision. It has nothing to do with a personal prejudice, and I want to make that very clear. As far as giving specific direction to the planning commission, I can't design from the dais. I don't think planning commissioners really can. I think this has to be reduced to an amount that may even need a redesign or staff's help, because obviously, if you make this smaller, it's going to make some of those issues go away. All the privacy impacts and all the extra windows, you're obviously going to have to relocate them and have fewer. So to me, I find it helpful to be specific in giving direction to planning commission, because again, we would end up in a back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Moore?
Yeah, thank you. So I hear that concern about, you know, the dominant concern of the neighbors being privacy, but I specifically asked the appellant's if reducing the massing would, in their opinion, better the privacy, and they said yes. So I think that the massing, to me, seems to be the underlying concern. And so I, what I would be comfortable with is sending this back to planning commission with the recommendation to reduce second-floor massing and adding elements to increase privacy for the surrounding neighbors, which I think is not so prescriptive as to, you know, potentially upend the entire application, but I think legitimately addresses the concerns. And I think, I mean, in fairness to the applicants, I think the applicants are very much hearing our discussion up here and have an understanding of the issues that we see with the application. So I don't feel it necessary to be prescriptive with the numbers that we ask them to bring to FAR down by.
If I could clarify, Vice Mayor, are you offering an amendment, friendly amendment?
I mean, it's probably more than a friendly amendment. But I mean, if we want, that's a motion I would be comfortable with if we want to do that. I would love to hear from Councilmember Badami.
If I may?
Councilmember Badami, please.
All right. So the first two bullet points, reduce the square footage to a amount not exceeding the largest in the immediate neighborhood, and reducing the garage not to be the largest. I would strike those two of the motion that I made, and replace those two bullet points with reduce the second-floor massing.
Would you mind, so maybe staff could state the motion as it stands?
I think that we have a motion, and it's been seconded. If Councilmember Badami would like to withdraw and make a second motion, I think that might clarify.
Okay, I'll withdraw and make a second motion then. Okay, I'll state the beginning part. I move to provide direction to staff to prepare a resolution to grant the appeal, and remand the application back to the planning commission with specific direction. Reduce the second-floor massing. Adopt the remaining two recommendations of the town architect recommendations, which was number one and number five, which was to provide an under-the-eve entry in lieu of the proposed stone tower; provide projecting trim at the second-floor line around all sides of the home; the number and location and species of the privacy trees shall be mutually agreed upon by the neighbors; work with the neighbors and town staff to minimize and relocate windows to mitigate privacy impacts to the neighbors; and use of obscure glass to address privacy at impacted locations.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion again.
Councilmember Rennie?
So possibly this is a question for staff. Does the motion, you're going to prepare a resolution, but in that resolution, you're going to need to have findings on how we can make the appeal. Does the maker of the motion need to provide some direction to you on findings or justifications for the appeal?
What I've heard so far is that the decision was not supported by substantial evidence in the record, and so the resolution would say, would reference the residential design guidelines, and say that those had not been satisfied.
If I may, I would also add that substantial evidence in the record also included the staff's recommendation of denial, and also Commissioner Barnett's quoting of section 2.1 of our residential design guidelines.
And so that's the foundation for the motion, is that, does that need to be in the motion itself?
If the council were to amend the motion to say, to include the findings that were just stated, that would be helpful.
So I will add that to that, to my motion, to include the findings as just stated.
And the secondor, do you accept that?
Yeah, that's fine. So I, so the, I like mutually agreed-upon tree species, I like relocating windows, I like obscuring glass where appropriate. I am not sure about requiring that the applicant meet recommendations one and five from the consulting architect. So I, and again, I'm sorry to get overly granular on this, but I would not want to include that provision of the motion.
Councilmember Badami?
If that's a friendly amendment, I will strike that as well, to remove those two recommendations of the town architect, which was number one and number five.
Thank you.
If that is agreeable to the secondor.
That is agreeable.
Okay. Councilmember Rennie?
So I'm trying to make sure, so I also have the same problem with the motion being too prescriptive. So I take it now, it's basically saying, reduce second-floor massing, mutually acceptable tree species, and I guess placements, and obscuring glass. Was there something else in it?
I heard relocate windows to assist with privacy.
Okay. But, okay, that sounds good. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? Then I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So it passes for one. Councilmember Risto opposing. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned about moving the windows around, because I thought they were in the least, as all the neighbors weighed in, they were already in the place that upset the least number of neighbors. So I don't know how the windows are going to move, but anyway, I appreciate the hard work everyone did to get us there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Badami?
I would just add that if you're reducing the second-floor mass, it's going to have an impact, most likely, on where the windows might be placed. But I appreciate your concern.
Okay, thank you. So with this, this is the first time we've had an appeal in a little while. Are there any further steps related to this? There's no appeal of an appeal, is that correct?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then I'd like to suggest that we take a break, 10 minutes, and if we could come back at 9:33, please. we could come back at 9:33, please. Okay, thank you. The recess is over, and we will now consider item number 19. Item number 19 is to introduce an ordinance amending section 0620020 to add the definition of qualifying alterations and consider introducing an ordinance establishing air quality and nitric oxide emission regulations. And so I think we would want to start with a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gabrielle Wieland, Town Attorney. I will begin, and then Robert Gray, the Town's Building Official, is here for technical questions. The staff report has two attachments. They're two separate ordinances. One ordinance would add a definition of what alterations will constitute alterations that require compliance with the new provisions of the California Building Code. And so staff is recommending that that provision be added to the town code. The second ordinance is a proposed ordinance that would replace the towns, it would amend the town's existing code to regulate nitrogen oxide emissions from appliances. Based on a variety of reasons, staff is recommending that the council defer its consideration of the, what's called a NOx emissions ordinance. It's an ordinance that regulates nitrogen oxide emissions. And I am available for questions, as is the Building Official.
Any council members have questions? No questions? Okay. Then we will open this for public comment. Does anyone here wish to speak about item 19? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so I'll close public comment and go to council members for clarifying questions, discussion, or maybe even a motion. Councilmember Risto.
I think I'll take the easy part first. I'm going to make a motion to introduce the ordinance defining qualifying alterations. So adopt the proposed amendment to section 6.20.020 of the town code, which defines qualifying alterations, and that's in Attachment 1.
Councilmember Badami?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Then I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, so passes unanimously. So let's kind of move to the second part of the recommendation, or the second part of the item, which is to consider introducing an ordinance establishing air quality and NOx emission regulations. Would anyone like to ask any questions or comment on that? Councilmember Rennie?
So my comment would be, we created a potential code changes that regulates NOx outside and inside. I think as it becomes more difficult to find the replacement equipment that's non-NOx, it becomes more an issue that others want to fight. And, you know, we know so there's some legal action potentially against this. So I would be in favor of rolling it back to only an indoor NOx requirement and asking staff to come back with something along those lines, and maybe exploring a little more what other cities have done.
Vice Mayor Moore?
I agree with all of that.
Other comments?
I completely agree. I don't know if Councilmember Rennie was turning it into a motion, or...
I can make it a motion.
I don't see any further discussion, so go ahead.
My motion would be to ask staff to change the ordinance to be focused on indoor NOx regulation, or no NOx in, you know, pollution, indoor pollution-related, no NOx equipment, and do some more work at looking what other cities are doing on this and match up in those areas.
And so to understand, before we take a second, that isn't necessarily continuing the item, is it?
Well, okay, I can call it continuing it, asking for some more work on it. So I can call it a continuing it.
Okay, thank you. You have a second? Councilmember Risto?
Second.
Okay. More discussion about it? The Town Manager, yes?
Thank you. I just want to clarify the recommendation precisely, because I think I heard it a little differently. You want to introduce the ordinance on air quality with the amendment to have the restriction specific for indoor pollution. And then the second piece before would have been to exclude the regulation against outdoor, but this, what you said here was about to research other agencies to see what they were doing. So can you just clarify what you meant by that?
So I didn't want to introduce an ordinance. I wanted staff to go back and work on modifying the ordinance and compare the modifications to what other cities have done. And so we, I think we want to call it a continuing of the item to bring back to us.
That makes it clear. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
None. Passes unanimously. And now we will move, thank you, staff, on this one. It's obviously an area of a lot of change that's going on. So now we can move to item 20. And item 20 is discuss options for a new town event. So do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Monica, our economic vitality manager. Before you this evening, our options for a new town event to take place in the fall beginning in 2025. Staff last met with the Town Council on October 1st to discuss expanding Screen on the Green, at which time the Town Council requested a menu of options for a new or expanded event that focuses on celebrating the fabric of the Los Gatos community, including interests such as music, art, dance, culture, lifestyle, and community service, with elements that appeal to a wide range of community members. The request for direction came from staff's observation that the Screen on the Green attendance was dwindling over the years, while the interest in the town's Spring into Green had increased, putting the event capacity for vendor participation, excuse me, putting the event at capacity for vendor participation. So during the direction on October 1st, it included asking staff to come back and look at options for Oak Meadow Park, Plaza Park, and the Civic Center, within the option of Oak Meadow Park expanding on the existing Screen on the Green, whereas the options for the other two locations were new events. As the Town Council moves through the discussion tonight, there are a few points that staff recommends that we keep in mind. The first being that staff is at capacity for town events, so we don't have the ability to add a fifth event. We'd like to keep it at the four. So the question is, would you like to expand on Screen on the Green, make no change, or create a new event? Planning the community event is a dynamic process, so what we're looking for is location, budget, timing, some of those large-scale elements, but then understanding that there may be challenges that come up along the way, so that we have some flexibility to keep the event going. Finally, elements such as road closures and time of day, the size, and the location will play a role in the event and the budget. And then the numbers that you're seeing in the report tonight are hard numbers, are hard costs, so they actually don't include any of the costs for the staff time. That's all absorbed within the individual departments. So given the lateness of the hour, I can go through the staff report and talk about each of those, each of the topics and each of the locations, or I can turn it over to you, Mayor, if you'd like to ask questions specific to the locations, and we can guide you through the conversation.
That might make sense. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. So starting with the event date, Screen on the Green has historically been the third Friday in September, unless it conflicts with a holiday. So if we were to look at the event at Oak Meadow Park, we would ask, or we would consider just keeping it on that day. If we're going to look at adding a new event, staff is recommending the second weekend in October, because currently it's not one that has other annual events taking place. And if that would be the case, we'd be looking at either a Saturday or a Sunday. As far as the general event elements, staff is looking at creating an event that is warm and inviting and welcoming a fall festival that has a community stage where folks can perform, lawn and festival-type games, food trucks, community tables where folks can gather. And when we say community tables, we're looking at all different shapes and sizes that really can provide different types of opportunities, so that we're appealing to a wide range of community members. Those can include, like, clusters of hay bales, they could include standing tables, they can include long tables to sit and gather with your neighbors. For the community stage, what we would be looking at is for organizers to have the option to participate in the event, either by running a game, running an activity, or performing onstage. We heard the council that they didn't want, or that you all didn't necessarily want another tabling event, where folks were just standing behind a table. So staff is looking at ways where the community organizers could kind of sponsor one of the booths, not necessarily by paying for it, but by being there and running the activity, and then sharing their great work with the community through that. So as far as the location goes, we heard a lot of the input that the council gave. And so we have some pros and cons in the staff report that are specific to each location. A couple of things that have come up since we met last that I wanted to share with you is, so we do currently have two events at Plaza Park each year, and we also have two at Oak Meadow Park. Those at Plaza Park are exponentially more well-attended than the ones at Oak Meadow Park. So to give you an example, Spring into Green and the Winter Celebration, they typically have between 1,700 to 2,000 people visit that park on the day. So the technology that we have that kind of counts folks doesn't necessarily count folks by the hour. It's kind of an order of magnitude. So we know that it's somewhere in 1,700 to 2,000. Whereas when we're looking at the Fourth of July, it's typically at 1,000 or less. And then Screen on the Green was at about 250 to 300 this year. So as we look at Oak Meadow Park and expanding Screen on the Green, the way that that would look would be, currently the movie starts right about sunset, so that's about 6:30 or 7:00 p.m. We would back that up then and have the community stage and the games start at about 4:00 p.m. One of the really wonderful things about Oak Meadow Park is that we do have Billy Jones as a partner there. So they offer the carousel rides, they offer the train rides, and then they also have the snack shack there. So it's a really natural, wonderful partnership that we do want to highlight and that we don't want to discount. That said, we know there are a lot of challenges with using Oak Meadow Park, especially in the dark. So by expanding the event, having a stage, and having the games, we would need to bring in a substantial amount of lighting, which then would require generators and such. So that just takes the budget into another direction. Likewise, the parking is a challenge there. So for the Fourth of July, we're able to use commercial space to park cars. However, because this would be a Friday, like, a workday, we wouldn't have that availability. So we would have to look at a shuttle, which is typically, it's $200 per hour, per shuttle, and there's a minimum on each shuttle. I think it's like three or four hours. So it's pretty substantial. And then understanding, where is that shuttle coming from? So where are those folks queuing? Do we need to staff those queues? What does that parking lot look like as terms of lighting and availability for space? So, just want to make sure I hit everything there. The other thing we would do is we could augment with food trucks, similar to what we do for the Fourth of July. We would still have the Billy Jones snack shack. They actually like having food trucks there as well. We've been in a lot of conversations with them about that. It just helps, it helps with lines, it helps with variety of food, and it helps with just keeping people moving. So the next location that we considered was Plaza Park, and we considered that kind of in two formats. One is alongside Farmer's Market, similar to Spring into Green, and then the other is as a standalone event. So if it was alongside Spring into Green, then it would obviously need to be on a Sunday. We would have some capacity issues, those ones that were running into a Spring into Green. But we would still look at, so while it's going to kind of mimic that, we would still look at not doing tabling. So look at doing games, a community stage, and then also closing Main Street, as we do for Spring into Green, in between North Santa Cruz and University. If we were to look at doing a fall festival at Plaza Park as a standalone event, then staff would recommend doing it on the Saturday, that second Saturday in October. And again, you could look at daytime, we could look at nighttime. Nighttime has a charm to it, but again, it's lighting, it's generators, it's kind of figuring out how we do that. We do do that for Los Gatos and lights. We do light up that area, but we know that that was also, that's a substantial cost that we want to consider when we're thinking about, about the space. So for a standalone event, what the staff was considering is using Montebello and Broadway to host the game booths, so that it would be a little bit more spread out. We could do, we could actually bring in more community organizers, and the event could grow as time goes on. And then what we were thinking is the lawn would really be reserved for the stage with the performances, and then large tables in areas for folks to gather with lawn games. We would line the street with the food trucks, so it would, it would be, feel like a more grand event, I think, and it would have space to fluctuate and move. It would be right in the center of town. So those are all things to consider. The other thing that we were looking at, as we kind of went back for the last few Octobers, it tends to be very, very hot. So we were thinking about, what does that timing look like if you have folks out on the asphalt, if you have folks on the grass area? There is a lot of shade at Plaza Park, but we want to kind of be thinking about what that looks like in terms of the event and the timing. in terms of the event and the timing. For both, for anything at Plaza Park, we do have the availability of the downtown parking. We have pedestrian access from folks who can walk. One of the things that staff believes is that because there's so much foot traffic downtown, and people tend to just be downtown, that it's a lot easier to wander into this event and to discover it kind of organically versus really setting out to attend the event. So then finally, we have the Civic Center as the third option. So the Civic Center is a great option in that it's really large and can support a big event. The Fourth of July used to be at the Civic Center for a very, very long time. We actually used the Los Gatos High School as kind of a support center for that. There's a couple of things to consider. There is no road closure that goes with the Civic Center. However, it's quite massive. I mean, you typically need to use the library lot for restrooms and for some of the logistical access. So it does restrict the patrons who can use the library. And when we're talking about that, there are two other really large events that take place at the Civic Center in the fall. So both of those are multi-day events, Fiesta Day Arts and Oktoberfest. And so I don't, it would be up to the council to really think about, is that, do we want to add another event in that same kind of timeframe, in that same location? Does that put too much use or too much emphasis in the Civic Center? And I, this kind of was a last-minute thought that I had tonight, so I actually didn't have a chance to check in with our library director. I apologize for that. But I was thinking, oh gosh, I know sometimes they have to take a workday when those big events happen, because they really are, our patrons are limited to having access to that asset. And then, so as far as parking, though, and access goes, I think it's very similar to the Plaza Park. There's still access to downtown parking, the trail, pedestrian. It's not quite as kind of organically you wander in as you do at the Plaza, but I think that many folks kind of understand there's something going on. And so like even with Fiesta Day Arts, I happened to be downtown that day, and people were asking me on the street, you know, I hear there's an event, how do I get there? So I do think that it still feels very central, if that's something that the council's after. So it's definitely a viable option that we could work with. So the two other things I want to note is, on the last page of your staff report in the conclusion, staff has walked through some questions for you to go through tonight to kind of help guide your conversation. And then just for the sake of understanding, the attachment includes all of the special event permits that were approved this year, as well as the town-coordinated events. Just to give the council an idea of kind of the load of events that we have in town, we do expect all of those annual events to come back next year. We, every January, we put out kind of a survey and ask people, you know, do you plan to come back? Do you plan to use the same day? We have not heard from anybody yet that they don't plan to come back, and we do have some applications on file. So we suspect it'll be a similar event load next year. So with that, that concludes my presentation. We do have staff here from PD and from PPW to help support our conversation tonight. So we look forward to supporting that. Thank you.
You, councilmembers? Well, do we have any clarifying questions first, and then we'll do public comment? Don't see any, so let's open to the public. Anyone in the room want to speak about this? Anyone on Zoom?
There are no hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, we'll close public comment and go to questions or discussion by the council. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for the very comprehensive report. You know, I know at the meeting where we discussed the potential for another event, there were some ideas brought up. But I really like how this kind of focused on three locations, and then how each location would impact what type of event could be there. So that was super helpful to me, because we can't really pick an event and then have it at any location. And, I mean, we have great venues, you know? I thought about the fact that it'd be great anywhere. I had one quick question. When you talk about doing it the second weekend in October, I know St. Mary's Country Fair sometimes falls on the second weekend in October, or it has in the past gone back and forth between the first and second. So my guess would be, we would not want to have it the same weekend as St. Mary's Country Fair, so it might have to change some years?
St. Mary's Fair should always be the first weekend. Sometimes if the Friday is like the 30th, and they'll do that. So we would have to, of course, monitor that. The other thing is, we did look several years out for Yonkaper and Rosh Hashanah, and there may be one Sunday in the next couple of years that does conflict. So we would want to be very sensitive to that. I think it would be similar to Screen on the Green, where we have the date set, but we may need to adjust, just to be respectful. But for the most part, St. Mary's is the first weekend.
Okay, great. And I think, you know, if we were to create a new event and have it, you know, going five or six years in, it's not like it falls on Christmas, or the day after Thanksgiving. Like, people will know about the event, and if it's the first or second weekend. Big picture, I mean, the way everything was broken down, I would want an event where there was the opportunity for groups to table, because one of the things that you brought up was that on Spring into Green, we have an overabundance of people that want a table, and not all of them are relevant to sustainability or what our theme is. And I think it would be nice to have another event where we have groups that would want to present or do things, or carry out games. I like the idea that people could be involved carrying out games or activities, and maybe interacting. And then, I'm sure other people have other comments, but overall, where I'm gravitating to is I really like it at the Plaza. I think for the reasons that you mentioned, we have two other really big events at the Civic Center in the same time of year. I think going back to the Plaza, not having it on a Farmer's Market day, because I think this event will want and easily be able to use all the space. And so being nestled into the Farmer's Market really constrains the space we'd have. And it creates a more difficult street closure, if we have to close Main Street. Closing Montebello Way is much more, much easier, more trivial, less impact on traffic, and, you know, cleaner. And I love, I just love the idea of a fall festival. I think, coming off of our tree lighting and our Los Gatos and Lights Festival, one of the officers said to me, he estimated there were 3,500 people there. It was packed, it was possibly one of the best events we've had. I mean, weather cooperated, I think people were ready for it. But you, Economic Vitality Manager, and your team, and everyone that worked on it, made that Plaza just glow. It was beautiful, and everybody enjoyed it. And so I think the opportunity to have a different season of event that is filled with community members and gathering just sounds wonderful.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I echo all of Councilmember Risto's comments. I'll provide some general comments first, and maybe, I know you outlined the questions at the end for us to kind of run through it, so I think it'd be helpful for all of us to provide that. But I am hugely supportive of this concept of a new fall festival, and I agree, it was a very comprehensive and helpful staff report. I really feel like I can see the vision and the life of this event, you know, coming into be. I think it's, you know, calling it a fall festival, I feel like is perfect. It, you know, if anyone's ever seen Parks and Rec, it kind of reminds me of the Pawnee Harvest Festival, which is this amazing thing that happens in the fictional town of Pawnee. But I really like the idea of this being a very inclusive event, where we invite lots of vendors, you know, and appealing food vendors. I liked your mentions of bringing in cultural and community groups to participate. And I think it's important to provide activities of interest for all ages. I think everything that you listed in the general event elements and community and nonprofit group participation parts of the staff report, I think every, you know, it's ambitious, for sure, but everything that you've listed in there, I think, is excellent. I think that's, I really mean it when I see the vision of what this event could be. I think all of the complications of Oak Meadow Park that you laid out are very much legitimate. And so I also like the idea of the event being at Town Plaza Park when Farmers isn't happening. I think that that makes sense. I think definitely shutting down Montebello and having the event, you know, take up the larger space there to accommodate this, because I think this event will be a hit. I also like the idea of, you know, food trucks. It's a little bit different being in downtown, because you have the downtown restaurants. I think having a Town Plaza is perfect, because you're, I think, more than any of the other locations, supporting the downtown business community. So it can just be a really, a really great thing. I have some more specifics on certain elements. But I also really liked your direction to us of council should provide high-level direction on the location scope and framework, and let staff, give staff the latitude to adjust the finer details. So clearly, your event planning savvy is superb, and I'm really grateful to have you working hard on this.
Councilmember Remy?
Okay, thank you. I'll apply my biases. The first one is, I think people go to theater less now. I mean, you've got it on your phone, you give it, your kid, you know, a little iPad to keep him busy. So I think the novelty of going to the Screen on the Green is not there so much anymore. I think that's part of the reason it's dying. So I would say, let the Screen on the Green die and come up with a new event. I like the fall festival idea. My other bias is I tend to like the idea of it being downtown more. You know, I guess, I don't have kids, but I personally would prefer to go to a downtown event versus going to the park event kind of thing. Again, you know, from a time of day you talked about, it seems to me if we really want it to be a children's event, which Screen on the Green was more of, it probably needs to be more in the daytime versus the evening time. That may or may not be true, again, you know, my thought on that. I don't think it necessarily has to be children, but I, you know, as you mentioned, an evening event, I'm thinking, well, smaller children need to be fed and probably starting to go to bed, and maybe that doesn't work as well. So I'm not sure what we're thinking on the children. And I like the idea of downtown also, because it, you know, it adds to the economic vitality. We're getting more people downtown. We've been working on that for quite a while, and we've done well. And maybe it doesn't need too much more help, but another event always helps a little bit more. I, you know, I heard some arguments for the Plaza Park. I was going to argue for the Civic Center, just because it'd probably be a little less cost. I think in the report, you talked about possibly needing to close Main Street between Santa Cruz and University, which gets to be a bigger deal and more cost. Maybe we try the event just on Montebello and in front of the post office, and if it's not going to fit, then we need to consider, well, should we spend more? But, so my first thought was, well, the Civic Center is less central, but I think it still brings people down here, and they still find it somewhat by accident if they aren't looking for it. So I'm not completely set on either one of those, but I am keeping cost in mind. I think I covered, oh, the second week of October sounds fine to me also.
Thank you. Councilmember Badami?
I'll provide, I have a few thoughts. I like the idea of Town Plaza Park. I mentioned this when we originally started talking about this. In October, you know, we have Oktoberfest at the Civic Center, usually the last weekend in September, first week in October. And that's a pretty big event. And then at the end of October, you know, we have Halloween. So I'm not sure that we would have a big-scale event right smack in the middle of that for a number of reasons. It's back to school, yeah, the weather can be nice, but sometimes it's not. Again, back to school, you've got Oktoberfest, Halloween festivities. I would prefer, well, I would want a daytime event, make it kid-friendly. But I'm thinking of keeping it within the scope of Spring into Green. But I'm thinking more along the lines of, with the Farmer's Market, because I think budget-wise, it would be a little bit more, maybe a lot more prudent, and I would want staff to come back with a comparison of numbers. But that's where I'm at, because I'm not even sure it would grow over time. It's just that time of year. I mean, wintertime, Christmas, tree lighting, that's big. Spring into Green, that's big. But will this ever be that big? I don't know. I have concerns about that. Just because of the time of year, the events that I just talked about, Oktoberfest, time of year, and part of the demise of Screen on the Green could be also attributed to the time of year and back to school, not necessarily people not wanting to watch movies outdoors. So again, I like the idea of community service organizations setting up tables. I like the idea of, you know, some music, some pumpkin decorating contests. Music, art, I think would be great, but I'd rather start out small. I think alongside the Farmer's Market, it would be lively and maybe get more people engaged.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to ask a quick question. My impression was, if we do it with the Farmer's Market, then we probably have to close Main Street. If we do it without the Farmer's Market, then presumably it's just closing Montebello.
That's correct. We could, to the point of Councilmember Badami, you know, seeing what our engagement is the first year, we could try to keep it within the park and see if that's something that works. The recommendation of closing Main Street was only if it was next to Farmer's Market. If we were not doing it with Farmer's Market, we wouldn't close Main. And then through the mayor, can I ask one question of Councilmember Badami? When you were making the recommendation for the timing, and you said with Farmer's Market, were you still thinking October? Or did you have a suggestion on a different time of the month?
I would still say October, because that's the whole point of, you know, fall. You get into November, now it's Thanksgiving, and now you really get cold weather. So I like October, but again, just caught between those, sandwiched in between Oktoberfest and Halloween, I just, that's a lot of activity for the month of October, being back to school.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Councilmember Badami raises some questions about the timing. But I have to say, I'm very excited about the idea of a new event in the Plaza, and I wanted to add a little bit different dimension to it, and that is the opportunity for inclusion and diversity. And I think this was raised by our DEI Commission, and in fact, it was actually mentioned by Philaki Phillips last night, because I think that not only arts, but food also brings people together. And it's a very tangible way for people to be exposed to new cultures. And that is a way, maybe not just having a truck serve food, but perhaps have a community member provide something that's unique to their culture and explain the meaning of it, and maybe even teach people how to make it. And so it, to me, there's an opportunity for a diverse cultural event. And I don't know, you know, I think Ms. Phillips said something about an international type of an event, and I think that that, you know, I'd just like to kind of add that dimension to what we're talking about. And perhaps to, as staff thinks about it, perhaps go back to the DEI Commission, because I think this really falls into the tangible things that that commission can do to bring people together and to understand each other's cultures. So that's my addition. Everything else, I think, is good. Obviously, we're going to have a little bit of a challenge in picking the exact right weekend to do it. Yes?
If I may, just make a couple of comments. I want to expand a little bit on kind of explaining what our thought was. So when we talk about the community stage versus a game versus an activity, it really hits what you're just saying. So if somebody has a group where they want to share a certain type of vegetable or a certain type of dish that that culture or that, maybe it's like a holiday that they make, then that could be the activity that they choose. Whereas if it's a community group that really wants to share their services, then they would choose a game. And then we have the community stage that could be, you know, we have Drum in the Park, which is an event that I know Ms. Phillips does put on. So perhaps they choose, the group would choose the performance. And then what we were thinking is something like Tyco Drummers or something that we could weave in in between. So I think focusing on a variety of the ways that the folks serve the community is where we were headed. We can certainly change that direction. But what we were thinking is, how can we really pull in those things? And to your point, just like you said, having a way that folks can demonstrate. So like you said, having a way that folks can demonstrate. So that will be a little bit of what takes some work, because we may need to go to the Department of Environmental Health and say, okay, we have this group that wants to prepare this, you know, how do we do that? So those are some of the things that we were really excited about. So I appreciate that you brought that up. And we can definitely work through what that looks like, if that's the direction that you'd like to, to take it.
Great. Vice Mayor Moore?
Thank you. Yeah, I think these are all really good suggestions. I think it's evident that we are excited about this idea. So just to run through a few more things, you talked about, you know, at a high level, are there components you'd like to see at the event and things that shouldn't be included? So I, I loved what you said about, you know, local community groups having the option to select between those three options. You know, I think that's a great framework. Run a game booth, create an activity, or, you know, perform on stage. I think, you know, I wouldn't necessarily limit it to like games and activities, but maybe just, you know, like you're saying, if they have food to provide, or, you know, if there is a cultural organization that wants to share about, you know, what they're working on or whatever. But I think you're, I think you also, you know, took our, not just a booting event to heart, and I think that, that will make this a, a much more engaging event. I, I, you know, some of the things that I could, I could see for, you know, events and activities happening, happening during the event would be some of the things like you suggested, like planting plant demonstrations, or, you know, like an intro to gardening, or learning an artistic technique. You know, you could invite people like Blossom Hill Crafts, or, you know, Petroglyph. I, I love the idea of practicing a wellness or culture related, you know, skill or activity. You could do like a yoga demonstration, or, you know, I could see lots of things like that. I, I really like the idea of it being sort of explicitly fall themed, like it is a fall festival. I like your, your, you know, there being hay bales and, and that sort of thing. I think that just kind of makes it a fun, you know, the fun theme. You know, encouraging cultural performances on stage, I really like that. I, I love the idea of a community stage. I think that's a cool way to sort of direct people, and then also having things off to the side that, that people can lean into. I, I really liked the mayor's comments about inclusion and diversity. I think you're very right that, that, you know, as much as we can bring in art, food, culture is, will be positive for this event. And I think that'll help bring out people that probably don't traditionally come to Los Gatos events. And so I think that's, that's great. With food, like I said, I think food trucks is a great idea, but I also think it'd be great to provide space for local food vendors to, you know, table and provide food, potentially on Montebello, which I think we should definitely... I, I think, you know, in the way we're talking about this event right now, I think it would be a pretty significant event. I, you know, I, I think this would be a, a great town event that, that would continue to grow. And so I think, I love whenever we can close on Montebello. I think, you know, anything that sort of increases, like our, the walkability, bikeability is, is good and brings people out. So I, I think that'd be great, especially if you're doing some of these more recreational sort of activities. You probably have a lot of people biking there, et cetera. And, and then, you know, last couple things, explicitly inviting community service organizations, nonprofits, and some of our, like, key partners to participate, I think, would be really good. And then, lastly, I think it, and maybe this is not a good idea, but I think it could be interesting for the town to involve the community in the planning in some way, and that could be in, you know, as unscientific of a way as putting out a Google Form survey on our social media, just to, to sort of get a sense. It wouldn't be a representative sample of the people in Los Gatos, but just to get a sense, to make sure we're not going off in the wrong direction, or, or some way for people to engage in this. When I sent out communications about this event, I got a surprising amount of responses back that people were really interested in engaging. I had two different service clubs reach out and say, hey, we would love to partner with the town on this, you know, which, which might not be, a true partnership might not be the right way to approach it, but having them involved in the event, I think, is, is great. So I, I like the timing of it. I think doing it in October makes a lot of sense. So I, I love all of this. I think the only thing we haven't, I'll stop for now, but I think the only other thing we haven't addressed yet is budget.
Councilmember Reston?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it definitely wants to be a fall event. When you look at what other events we have with Spring into Green, the lights, Fourth of July, you know, this is the part of the town calendar that we want to fill. And I think there would be a lot of enthusiasm by families. Thinking about the plaza, I know that a lot of times any event in late September, early October, we have had really oppressive heat. On the other hand, there's not a lot of light at the plaza, and so an evening event, that park gets really dark, and it'll really drive up costs to have lighting. So I'm tending toward a daytime event. I really think a daytime event makes more sense. You won't see the hay bales if it's at night, unless you've got all the lighting. So I think we still go for day, would be my opinion. And then I think with the community stage, making sure that you've got a couple of professional groups, like taiko drummers or dancers, but leaving space to see who fills in. And this will be the first year, but I think different community groups, dance groups, representative of different cultures, will probably be attracted to it. And in terms of the booths, I do think if we're looking for a fun activity, I would lean more toward what was suggested in the report, and that is if there's a service group or any other group that wants to come and talk about their service, that it be paired with an activity. It could be a game, it could be succulents on pumpkins, it could be, I don't know, something. But an activity where people are interacting, and while they're doing it, they're talking, because it's just not that fun for most people to just walk over to a table, walk over to a table, walk over to a table. And I think that sort of takes away from the theme of this being a celebration. And I think it would be interesting to see which service groups either want to help with it, you know, if Rotary wants to volunteer, or any of our many service groups, how they want to partner. But if, for example, West Valley Community Services wanted to come and share, if they had some little activity, because I think that goes with the theme. So that would be my strong prevalence. And I think to keep the price down, I don't want to see, I don't want to do lighting, so it should be a daytime event. And I think that we don't want to look at closing Main Street, so I want it on a non-farmer's market day, where closing Montebello is infinitely less expensive. Obviously, it's not going to be nothing, but, but that's what I'm thinking.
So I would ask, have we covered your questions? Obviously, we didn't cover budget, but do you have enough information to bring back a budget or a budget range?
I think so. I want to bring just a couple of things. One is, we are, as you all know, we're a two-person, part-time team. So to engage, I think, in surveys ahead of time, and then to try to invite in partners on an event that hasn't been developed yet, I think could be, it could be extremely difficult to kind of rein in the ideas. What I'm thinking might work is a couple of things. One is, we could start small and grow the event, so we could try it at farmer's market and move it to a Saturday, or we could start at a Saturday smaller, maybe just in the park. One thing about, I love the idea of bringing in the businesses. I know the Chamber had a little bit of a challenge when they tried to do the food and wine events, because folks have their whole setup in the kitchen. And so to bring them in, I'm going to go off the top of my head, but I want to say it's something like $3,000 to $5,000 per food booth. So to bring somebody in, if the town is paying that cost, we would want to be very cognizant of what that adds. Whereas the way a food truck works is we guarantee a minimum, and it's typically a minimum we can meet. We, we were even able to meet it last year at Fourth of July, when it was blazing hot and we had such low attendance. So while I appreciate that we want to, and what I was kind of thinking is, in my head, is maybe some of the restaurants could do like picnic-to-go things, and people could pick them up and bring them in. But I want to really be, I just want to be upfront with what that cost is to put in those food, those food booths, and they have to be on the asphalt. Otherwise, we have to put down plywood on the grass, and that's not something that will typically work for our turf. So the other thing is just being, like, really understanding what the staff time will take. So I think if you would like us to come back, and I think the manager would like to share some thoughts too, but if you'd like us to come back, we really need to think about what that timing is and what that budget is. So if you can even narrow it down to one or two choices, then we can really do a compare and contrast of what that looks like.
Town Manager?
Thank you very much. As I had said previously, staff in the town have multiple hats that they wear with each of the functions that they're looking at. And so here we have Monica, who does a fantastic job. And in fact, I was going to have something in my update about how great the events are this year, so thank you. Monica is the Economic Vitality Manager, and that is more than just putting on events and trying to attract people here. We also have an obligation to look at our local businesses and find opportunities to support them, support those that are struggling, support others to actually come to our town and open up those businesses. And so to the extent that we're doing events, and in this case, having an event whose attendance is falling, and considering whether you do a second event to replace that one, to keep the number of events the same that we provide, we're trading off the capacity that supports our other businesses. And so we can come forth with the options, we can talk about the costs, both the hard costs and the staff costs, and we can talk about the events that other organizations provide to keep the totality of events that the town provides. But I also want us to be cognizant of what we're not going to be doing because of it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager, for, for that. I think that, that's helpful context, and, and I know that, that, you know, we have talked about, I think, in passing in these meetings, that, you know, we're talking about the cost of the event that very much does not include staff time, and it's not just Monica and Jessica. So I hear that. The, so one of the things that, that I thought when looking at the budget, for, for the amount that, that we get from $45,000, which is the total events, you know, budget, is, it's pretty incredible that, that you all do what you do with that small amount of money. And, and my understanding is that hasn't changed in, in a while. One of my questions for you was, would it make more sense for the town of Los Gatos, and I don't want to overcomplicate this, but just a thought, would it make more sense to, for the town council to consider raising the total events budget for your department? Or, you know, knowing that, that, as you said in your report, events fluctuate, and, you know, it depends on, you know, a variety of things, what the total cost of each event is? Or are you looking for, would it be more helpful for you to just put a budget on this event?
It would be most helpful for me, and I don't want to overspeak if, if the manager or the finance thinks differently, but it's most helpful for us to have that number in totality. Part of what we learned out of the Fourth of July this year is that actually the symphony was a whole lot happier coming earlier. We spent a significant amount of money to put up a sale that provides shade for them at 1:00 p.m., and just by having them shift and come at 10:00, we can make some savings there. I don't know what that's going to be at this point, but we're trying to work those numbers. So we're always trying to kind of like save a dime here to use it there. So to answer your question, an overall budget is definitely the easiest for us, because last minute things pop up all the time that we have to pay for or cut.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
So I don't know that, that I'm prepared to, to make an, a motion on this, but I just think for, for council's consideration. I, I think that, you know, the staff report talked about something, that an event of this scale is costing something in the ballpark of $20,000. And so I, I thought that it could make sense to increase the total events budget by $25,000 to $70,000. Because I, I think that, I, again, I, I'm not, you know, an events professional, but, but looking at, at everything that we do on that, that shoestring budget, I think our community events, in my opinion, do a huge, huge amount for the town. And, and I think what our, our town manager shared about, you know, our events, you know, inevitably, the, the larger we go, the more we put into our events, it inevitably eats into the amount of time that, that our staff can spend doing, you know, sort of traditional economic vitality. But I think these events are huge for economic vitality. I think that they are. To me, it's a, a trade-off that, that seems to, you know, we wouldn't want to go too far, but it, but seems to, to be prudent. And so I would be interested in increasing the total events budget to, you know, help our Economic Vitality team execute on, on this event and, and all of our events.
Question for staff. In looking at the event, is it a foregone conclusion that we're canceling Screen on the Green? And if we did cancel it, would there be some savings there, both in staff time as well as out-of-pocket?
That's one of the questions up for you tonight. And if you do cancel it, that is our smallest budget. It's about $2,500, and is very limited on the staff time. We have, Jessica's the only staff that comes from our department out there, and then we have, I think, one or two PPW folks that are there, and they kind of help her lock up the park at night.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reston?
Thank you. Yeah, I think to address Screen on the Green, my insight is the reason it's dramatically fallen off, is because it's not that hard to put on outdoor movies anymore, and all the grade schools have movie night. So there's been some years where whatever movie we're going to show, just the week before, one of the elementaries had movie night that night. So I think that's the biggest reason we've had that drop off. This was our most economical event, and so replacing it with something else inherently is going to cost more money, it sounds like. Even if we had a pretty straightforward, simple event at Town Plaza, you need more than a screen and a projector. I mean, it's a lot more staff time to organize it. I would be, I don't know that I want to make a decision about the budget yet, but I would be interested in knowing what it would take to do the first fall event with maybe not food trucks. You know, people can go get food and picnic, have partners there, minimum staff time. So I think with, I think the survey could be a great idea, but I think that could be a giant staff sock to try and figure out what to do with that, you know, from a timing perspective. So I don't know what it would cost to have, you know, three performing groups or something, and then have it fill in. Now, that'll be a lot of staff time to coordinate who's going to perform and how they're going to do it. But I would be interested in something that would be an outline of a fall event, where it's, it, it's something that kind of whets people's appetite and has the opportunity to grow, especially given that we have community partners or groups that want to be at Spring into Green and don't really fit there, to be able to say, oh, second weekend in October, you know, on Saturday, we're having this, see who comes, see what happens, and not invest a huge amount of money in it. And then with the idea that it could grow and we could increase our budget, is one thought that I've got.
Let me speak a little bit to that. We can look at some of those costs in putting on an event that will be larger, obviously, than the event that would go away. It was made mention that we are, our budget is shoestring. It is. It's $45,000, but it's hard costs. It doesn't include staff costs. The cost is way larger than $45,000. If you include the subsidy we provide for the parade, it is massively greater than that. And so what I've asked staff to do as we start to do events in 2025, I want to capture the hard, direct, and indirect and overhead costs. What is the fully, totally loaded cost to provide an event, so at least the community understands what the cost is, and the council can look at it and say, at 250 attendees at $35,000, does the value there for our community? And it may be based on the topic, but it may not be necessarily based on the attendance, and we have to actually know that. In terms of the partners that we bring in here, there's no shortage, obviously, of the considerations of what kind of events. And I know that DEI Commission has been trying to find opportunities to go out there and do outreach. But I also then want to flip back and look at the plan that a group like DEI would have. And there's only three references to events, of which none of this comes close except for one. And those events are specifically coordinated with the schools. And so if we're going to start look, if we're going to start looking at expanding scope of missions, I also want to look at the plans that we have to make sure they align with the direction we want to go, and make sure that we're being very effective in the limited resources we have at staff in supporting the commissions, the council, and the community groups that want to do those activities. And so my recommendation is, we take back and look at a couple of options that we can bring back. We'll look at the hard costs, and we'll look at the soft costs and staff time, and tell you the difference in the budget that would be increased to put on that event. And maybe we could tweak something that actually fits all that criteria.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that, that all makes a lot of sense. And I think, as I said before, I think we're a council that does well with options. So I think maybe, you know, it's, I, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but it sounds like we're... want to put words in anyone's mouth, but it sounds like we're all sort of leaning towards Town Plaza Park, so I think that sort of, you know, takes care of one aspect of this. I really, I think it'd be great to get, you know, sort of the, the minimum and maybe a larger scale of what this could be, where you do close down Montebello and bring in food trucks and all of that, to understand the delta, and then also have, you know, some sort of staff analysis of, you know, how much we're increasing the potential success of the event by putting a little bit more energy and resources into it. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Is there more input that's needed at this point?
No, I just want to repeat back what I'm going to bring back to, to make sure that I've hit all the points. So the last time we were here with the council talking about staff resources was 2023, so we have been tracking some of those hours since. We'll try to get a chart together so you can see how that time has, has moved for staff time with the different events. We will look at a scale, I think I heard both Sunday and Saturday as options, so I want to respect that there are those, that that scale could be, could really change the budget. So we will come back with options at Plaza Park for either alongside Farmer's Market or as a standalone event. Those will also include road closures and not road closures, so we'll have kind of some, some options there to the best that we can. We'll break apart what that looks like in staff time, what that looks like in hard costs, and then if we can get some better numbers on, on attendance, then we'll try to break that down so that you can understand the full picture.
If I could add one other thing, maybe, would it be possible to bring some of these ideas to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission? Again, they're advisory, but I know that they may have some ideas about food truck versus individuals from the community, and they may even have some ideas about how we could recruit some volunteers to help with the event as well. So is that, is that possible to do that?
It always is possible. Are we just looking at a little bit of a recommendation, or are we changing the scope of the DEI plan?
I think that there is something in the DEI plan related to events, and I believe it was discussed a couple of times, so I wouldn't throw this open as a big, you know, a very big brainstorming there, but maybe more just, here's the idea, how would you think about making this really a, an inclusion event?
We can do that. The event was specific to school events, but we can bring this to him to discuss.
Well, I don't know whether others think so, but I think it'd be helpful. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think that's, when, I think that was one of the, when we were talking about the creation of the DEI Commission and selecting commissioners, I think that was one of the things that excited a lot of us most is, is having them, you know, put it, you know, helping support that sort of thing, so I think that's great. And I had one last question for the good of the order I completely forgot to ask. We talked a little bit about children, adults, you know, everybody. For me, I think this is an everybody event, you know, kids, adults, you know, middle-aged people, older adults, so I think this should be an event that's inclusive for everyone. With that in mind, and I didn't see anything about this, so I'm assuming the answer is no, but was there any thought on if, if this is a drinking event?
We had a lot of thought on that, actually. So there's a couple directions it could go. First of all, beer and wine is always allowed in our parks under our town code, as long as you have a picnic lunch, is how we describe it in the code. So if there's food available, then someone could bring beer and wine. Once you sell beer and wine, then you have to have an ABC permit, and you have to delineate those two spaces, so you can't have two different ABC rules governing one location, which is what we see at Fourth of July. So we invite in the service clubs, they create a beer and wine garden, so that outside of that garden, folks can still bring their beer and wine. What I'm hearing is maybe if we're even doing a model where people are picking up food at local restaurants, then maybe they're bringing their beer and wine with that. So we, we definitely heard the direction that it was to be age-friendly, running the gamut of the age groups in town. So we had a lot of discussion about alcohol, but I think our, our thought was that that would be something that could be maybe considered later down the road, and not necessarily the heart of the event, since folks do have a way to bring those beverages if they are eating in the park.
Okay. Thank you. I will close this item with very much thanks to Monica and the town manager for bringing us a number of ideas and for being willing to explore them to the next step. So we will move on to item 21. Item 21 is to approve a third amendment to the employment agreement between the Town of Los Gatos and the Town Attorney and so forth. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Michelle Parkman. I am the Human Resources Director for this town. Before you can night is an agreement for the Third Amendment to the Town Attorney contract. Now, as part of the employment agreement for our Town Attorney, on a yearly basis, the Town Council reviews the Town Attorney's performance and compensation. This year, upon completion of a successful evaluation, the Town Council has approved a salary increase. Those salary increases include a 5% cost of living adjustment, which is retroactive to July 7, 2024, and also a 2% merit increase, which is going to be effective retroactively to November 24, 2024. This would increase the Town Attorney's salary to $279,807. Now, the reason this is before you today is because of Senate Bill 1436. This Senate bill requires an oral summary at a council meeting when any recommendation is made relating to salary or fringe benefits for any person employed under an employment agreement. So today, the recommendation that we have for you is to approve a third amendment to the employment agreement between the Town of Los Gatos and the Town Attorney, authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, modify the management salary schedule to reflect the new salary for the Town Attorney, and authorize a budget expenditure adjustment in the amount of $22,017.61 from the available general fund capital and special projects reserve. Thank you. That concludes my report, and I'm here to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Then I will open public comment. Anyone wish to comment on item 21? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Then I will close public comment and see whether council members have any questions or discussion, or would like to propose a motion. Councilmember Badami.
Counsel already discussed this, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the Third Amendment to the employment agreement between the Town of Los Gatos and the Town Attorney per attachment one, authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, modify the management salary schedule to reflect the new salary for the Town Attorney in attachment two, and authorize a budget expenditure adjustment in the amount of $22,017.61 from the available general fund capital special projects reserve.
Vice Mayor.
Second, I think our Town Attorney is serving us incredibly well.
Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Okay. Item 22. Thank you for the report. Item 22 are proposed modifications to the Town Policy 2-11, commission appointments, residency, and attendance requirements, and establishing a quorum as recommended by the Policy Committee. Would someone like to present this?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Wendy Wood, Town Clerk. The Town Council Commission Appointment Policy 2-11 outlines the procedures for all Town Boards, Commissions, and Committee Recruitments, Appointments, Residency, and Attendance Requirements. Over the past years, several revisions have been made to the policy to ensure equity and consistency in these procedures. Recently, the Council Policy Committee met to discuss and evaluate proposed revisions to the policy concerning attendance requirements for commissioners. The current attendance threshold creates inequities among commissions and do not allow flexibility for absences related to illnesses. Over the past months, the committee discussed several proposed modifications to the policy, which included implementing excused and unexcused absences, revisions to the number of absences allowed, establishing a time limit for commission meetings with some exceptions, and implementing a summer recess for all commissions. They also discussed changes to resolve conflicting language in the policy with the Finance Commission ordinance. Staff has prepared a redlined version of the policy based on the direction of the committee for Council's consideration. The major changes to the policy include adding a summer recess for all commissioners in July, adding a two-hour time limit for the length of regular commission meetings with the exception of the Planning Commission, the Historic Preservation Committee, and meetings related to discussions of the town's annual budget, revisions to the absence requirements, including distinctions between excused and unexcused absences, adjustments to the allowable number of absences based on the percentage of meetings, and other amendments to resolve conflicts with the Finance Commission ordinance. Additionally, minor cleanup changes were made throughout the document for consistency and clarity. The Council Policy Committee reviewed these recommendations, these revisions, and recommend the council approve the proposed modifications as shown in attachment one. This concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Yes. Councilmember Rami.
So the recess in July includes the Planning Commission also?
Yes, and we did have a carve-out so that if there were any urgent business items, they could call a special meeting.
And the recess is because we're seeing more absences in July, or are we thinking it's a good time for staff to take off because the council's also off?
It was to align with council's recess and to allow for vacations, so it would eliminate any need for absences of commissioners in the summertime.
And if I may, if there's any critical business for the town, obviously, the business takes precedence, and we would schedule meetings to ensure that there was no delay. I think an example off the top of my head would be anything planning has to deal with when it comes to development.
Now, if I could follow up on that, how would that get worked out in terms of the Planning Commission having a special meeting? That, would, would staff recommend that, or would the, the chair have to request that? How would that work?
It really is premised on what goes through community development, what project is there, what the comments were, what has to go forth for action, the timelines required for that to be acted upon, and we would coordinate between the director and the chair on scheduling that in advance so that the commissioners are aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. As someone who sat on the Policy Committee, I mean, to clarify, one thought was, you know, there are other communities where there's a full break for a month or two in the summer, and so the thought was commissioners could then plan their vacation in July, just like council members. We have a carve-out for Planning Commission as well as, I thought, Historic Preservation. Both of those commissions, unlike the others, are basically, you know, sort of quasi-judicial, and they're more responsive to something happening, so if there were a timeline that came up and Planning Commission had to deal with something in July because it had to be covered within the next 30 days or 60 days or something, they would. And, you know, it's the same thing on the Town Council, we're off for the month of July, but I do remember when most of us were on this council, we had one July where I think we had two or three special meetings. So, you know, you make your plans, but then you're ready to pivot. But I do think it makes sense to give staff while the council is not meeting, you know, DEI Commission may want to go through July, but I think our staff deserves to have a break from all the commissions and either be able to take vacation or catch up on all the other work they're doing and have one month off from commissions when possible.
I think we're getting a little bit into discussion, so I'd like to just pause here and ask if there's public comment. Don't see anyone rushing up here. Anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, then we can resume the discussion.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you. Yeah, one of my favorite parts about these revisions is the summer recess. I've always, since I started on the council, I've always thought that it would make sense for commissions to observe the same summer recess that the council observes. I think that, that this is really, I think, you know, perhaps most importantly, I think it's a break for staff, and, you know, our clerk's office works pretty much nonstop because there are constant meetings, and so I think that's a well-deserved break, and I think if the council can be off during, you know, the summer, then the rest of the, the commissions can be off during the summer, as, as we are the highest level decision-making body. So I think that's good. The one question I had about this, and I, you know, don't think this was purposeful or what have you, but I, I think when we're talking about excused absences, I view the sort of very specific immediate family restriction as a bit old-fashioned, perhaps. I think that, that family member or loved one would be better than dictating that it has to be a spouse, domestic partner, parent, child, sibling, or dependent, because that excludes grandparents, girlfriends, boyfriends, best friends, you know. I think about if, if, you know, any of those people in my life passed away or needed caregiving, I would, would want to be able to take care of them without having to, to think about other responsibilities. So I, I'd be interested in amending the parts of the, the document that talk about immediate family to say family member or loved one.
Councilmember Badami.
How do you define loved one? I mean, that, that could be so broad. I mean, I'd love my pets, too.
If we want the flexibility, one option, you know, and when I have the clerk's input on this, too, could be, as also determined by the commission, and so there, in some cities, you have to approve the excused absence during the commission. So we have the criteria, but the commission still has to vote and say, we excuse your absence for the fall, for the fault for five B. And you can just determine, let the commission decide on a case-by-case basis if there's a reasonable basis for that familial or loved one's illness.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
I'd be, I think, more interested in doing it the other way, so if a, if a commissioner says, I will not be attending this meeting because of the death of a loved one, I think I would, I mean, I don't know, I don't foresee many of our commissioners, you know, falsifying that. So I think if there were an issue, we could maybe have the commission address that, but I would be trusting of our commissioners to not, not lie about people in their lives, you know, going through, through hard times.
Question question. How many unexcused absences are permitted?
I think we listed as 25% for unexcused and then 35 for total, so if people don't utilize unexcused, they would be allowed to have more excused absences.
Okay. So I'll just add a comment that I think that that gives quite a bit of latitude, so you're not going to kick somebody off the commission for one or two or three events, and I think we get into a very gray area and would be concerned about how we would objectively evaluate. I also think that perhaps the commission itself could look at things, but I'm concerned about taking up the time of our commission to deliberate on, on absences. So I, you know, I, I think that we should look at the percentage as, as giving us some flexibility, so I prefer, prefer to stay with what is in, in the, in the language.
And I'd just like to make a correction.
And I'd just like to make a correction. It's actually 20% of unexcused absences, not 25.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
So I think for me, this is, you know, maybe more of a philosophical, you know, feeling about inclusivity in this. I think that, you know, thinking only of the nuclear family, you know, I have a girlfriend of more than five years who, you know, might as well be a spouse, but she is not. And I don't think that saying that that relationship is less meaningful, you know, in this statute than a sibling or a domestic partner is fair. So I, maybe I don't know the right language. I think family or loved one makes sense. But I think adding in some sort of latitude that allows for grandparents, longtime romantic partners, others, is important. I think that's a, you know, not that it's going to be an issue all the time, but we're creating the policy, right? So I think it's worth, you know, including.
Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. I think this is why with a policy committee of two, you don't always think of everything. And so that's why it comes to the council and we have this discussion. I think for all the years, you know, obviously, on the Town Council, we don't have excused or unexcused. We just have whatever. At a commission level, typically, if you're going to miss, you have to call the staff liaison and let them know. And so I don't know if staff could come up with some words where it basically says, you know, family member, close friend. I want something that sounds inclusive but also gives discretion to the Director to take that relationship into account. Because I don't know that there's words that will cover everything. But if somebody called and said, you know, "My roommate was just killed by a car, and I have to go claim their body," I mean, you're not going to say, "Oh, that's an unexcused absence." So I think there has to be some discretion to the Director or somebody about, is there an excused absence that we haven't covered?
So all of you have said very valid points. And I think we also have to look at this as a policy. When you say a family member or a sibling passed away, are we actually taking the step in verifying that relationship? Most likely not, right? Maybe in a very rare instance. And so what we're really defining is a criteria to avoid a commissioner who's participating and deciding to just not seriously attend the commission. So I think the way we could handle this, I would just add another line that says, or as otherwise determined by the commission, and give the commission the latitude for some case that we didn't consider that's very legitimate. Because your case is exactly right. It's my roommate. It's, for me, a volunteer police officer shot and killed, and I can't attend the meeting. I mean, we can't anticipate it. And since we're not looking at this from a legal basis, as we do when it's an employee per se, we don't have to be that hard and fast. And so if it is a loved one, that's a girlfriend or boyfriend, yeah, absolutely. I mean, of course, we're not going to want you coming to the commission, and the commission would have the heart to say you're excused. So we can just add that one line, and it covers that and other scenarios.
Councilmember Rennie.
I'm a little apprehensive on giving it to the commission because they're going to have a hard time, you know, it could creep into, you know, different things. And they, you know, come to the commission and say, you know, whatever. "I sprained my ankle today, and I don't feel like coming." And the commissioners are going to have a hard time saying no to the fellow commissioners that they have to work with. I'm struggling with this. I mean, something that's clearly, okay, it didn't quite fit, but it was your girlfriend who is, you know, hit by a car, you know, that's obvious. But my worry is it starts creeping into things that are less obvious, and the council, and the commissioners, you know, it's going to be difficult for them to ever say no, I think, to somebody that they've got to work with.
Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, all good. So I appreciate the suggestion from the manager. I have the same exact feeling that we are going to believe people about the instances that happen in their lives. We're not, I do not think any, you know, staff or, you know, commissioner or elected official is going to be in the business of, you know, verifying who got hit by a bus. But, so with that, I think, I agree with what Councilmember Rennie said, that it is maybe a bit odd to have the commission sort of hashing this out. So I would go back to just changing immediate family to family or loved one. And then we can, you know, and then that's it. It's a, if they're a family member or a loved one, we believe the person, and that's, you know, how we do it. Because I think that you get into the other thing, and then you still have, you're still not, you know, and again, it's not that important, but you're still not fixing my problem of somehow a long-term partner being less important than a, you know, a dependent. And you're opening it up to a lot more things, which I do not think was the intention. So I would, I'm making the suggestion that we should change immediate family in this document to family member or loved one.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I can make it a motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, should I make them, I move to approve the proposed modifications to Town Council Policy, 2-11, Commission Appointments, Residency and Attendance Requirements, and Establishing a Quorum as recommended by the Policy Committee with the amendment of changing immediate, of striking immediate family and the definition of immediate family and replacing it with family member or loved one.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Comments? While I'm very sympathetic to the idea of including other than very cut-and-dried relationships, I'm concerned about that being a bit vague and could be used the other way and get into a dispute about whether someone really loves someone or not. And so I am uncomfortable with the language, so I'm not able to support it. I do prefer the suggestion of the Town Manager to address that. I think it would adequately address it. Councilmember Badami.
For those same reasons, I just haven't seen that type of wording in a town document using the phrase "loved one." And I'm in the same situation as Councilmember Moore. My boyfriend is here in the audience, and if something happened to him, obviously, I would want to take care of him. You know, do I love him? When we talk about, do we love somebody, you know, or if it's a roommate you want to take care of? Do you necessarily love the roommate? Or maybe if it's a fellow police officer that got shot and you want to take care of them, does that mean you love them? You don't love them? I'm just uncomfortable with the wording. I mean, I appreciate your intent. I think it's good. But I just think it's odd terminology to put into a town document.
Discussion? Oh, yes. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. I don't have a problem with the term. I mean, we're not creating a legal document, and my goodness, we're talking about attendance on a voluntary commission. So clearly, there can be other circumstances that come up that might warrant discretion. But I think taking discretion out of this makes sense, and so I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay, I'm going to say that I'm willing to give it a try. I think this is a policy that we've actually made quite a bit of change to, and I think that we're looking at some further changes as well, so I will support. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. And that is our last item on the agenda for tonight, except for Council Matters and Town Manager Report. So let me start with Councilmember Rennie.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. On 12/5, I attended the VTA meeting as the alternate observing. Thing of most interest was they approved the funding to start building the entry structure for the drilling machine. They're expecting drilling is scheduled to start in '27 for the BART. I should have said BART, for the BART project. On 12/6, I met with John Cowan from El Camino Hospital District, talk about the town and how they can be involved in their philanthropy and so forth. I attended the tree lighting and the Christmas parade with all the rest of the council members. On 12/8, I attended the Cities Association Holiday Gathering. 12/9, I had a meeting with the potentially incoming Saratoga Mayor to give idea. He wanted to get ideas about being a mayor and so forth, so I gave my opinions and advice. 12/9, I attended the Finance Commission meeting. 12/11, Silicon Valley Clean Energy had a holiday mixer and panel discussion. The event of the panel showcased, the whole event showcased the impact of Silicon Valley Clean Energy programs on customers in the community. The event included a customer panel and highlighted programs such as rebates for electric appliances and EV charging, community grants, multifamily retrofits, customer savings with the competitively-priced Silicon Valley rates. Then the board met afterwards, and during the board meeting, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy approved a continuing four-year, four, sorry, 4% discount on electric generation rates compared to PG&E with added discounts for care and fare customers. We also approved the 2025 policy platform, which allows us to, an ad hoc legislative committee, track bills and so forth. We approved the CEO submitting letters of support for matching MTC grants, funds for EV infrastructure projects, and received an update on recently-launched programs. On 12/13, I met with a potential Planning Commissioner, a prospective Planning Commissioner to talk about Planning Commission.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say I've loved seeing Los Gatos lit up for the holidays. It's been great to have all the lights up. I think that's just such an amazing thing we do. I had friends and family in from out of town, and they, one of them is genuinely thinking about moving to Los Gatos because of what a big Christmas fan they are, and so I thought it was very sweet. Like the rest of the council, I attended the tree lighting and the Christmas and holiday parade. Both events were just excellent, as always. I attended the Cities Association Holiday Party as well. I held my monthly Council Member Community Coffee. Really enjoyed that. I attended the swearing-in of new Assembly Member Patrick Aaron's. He is in a seat that was formerly, Los Gatos now has been moved to Cupertino-Sunnyvale. But Patrick knows Los Gatos well, and I think is going to represent us very well at the state level. I attended a West Valley Sanitation District meeting. I also attended their holiday luncheon. And as a reminder, the West Valley Sanitation District does all of the sort of sanitation services for the West Valley cities. The day, the morning of the luncheon, they had their first significant backup and spill at the Los Gatos-Montesereno border in a long time. And a bunch of the crew came in late, had to go shower and get changed. And it was a real reminder of how important the work they do is. You, you know, I always say it's a body you never want to be hearing too much from, and usually, we don't. So really thankful to them for their hard work. I also had a variety of meetings with community members, including John Cowan from El Camino. I met with a Los Gatos student doing a project on food insecurity, who was really interested in the funding that we have given to Live Oak, and they were really appreciative of that, and a business owner who was concerned about inclusivity in the town. And that's all. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. On the 5th, the day that all of us were getting a tsunami warning, I was actually heading to East Palo Alto at Cooley Landing, which is a great venue for conferences. I was on a panel from tomorrow's City-County Manager Forum, and it was a group of directors, managers, assistant and deputy city managers who are interested in taking the next step in the next couple of years to become city managers. And there were two recruiters there, a council, a city manager, and I was invited as a council member who had recently gone through the process of hiring a city manager, which is the first time they had a council member there. So it was really great. It was interesting to talk to people, had great conversations, and a wonderful opportunity to share my experience as being on the hiring side. On the last weekend, of course, like everybody else, or two weekends ago, it felt like the whole community was out for the Los Gatos and Lights tree lighting and the parade. We had absolutely perfect weather, and it was just a beautiful opportunity to see our town shine. It's great to be in the parade and see everybody lining the sidewalks. It's great to get off the parade at the beginning and then be able to walk through and see the rest of it. Just a perfect, perfect weekend. On the 8th, I also attended the Cities Association Annual Holiday Party. I know our manager was there as well. It's just a wonderful opportunity to socialize and connect with electeds from all of our nearby cities and be able to celebrate and share what we all have in common. On the 14th, along with the mayor, and I'll let him talk more about it, but we braved the cold and the rain to attend Wreaths Across America at the Los Gatos Memorial Park. And it's a beautiful event that I've attended for many years. Matthew was there as the mayor, so I'll let him talk about that. And then overall, I've met with a number of residents about housing development, and I've met with council members from Saratoga, Montesereno, and Cupertino just to talk about areas of common interest in the upcoming year and how our West Valley cities can continue to collaborate. Thank you.
Councilmember Badami.
On December 4th, I attended the West Valley Mayor's and Town Manager's monthly meeting. It was celebratory in nature, being that it was our last meeting of the year due to the rotation of mayors for 2025. I think Mayor Hudes, she'll really enjoy those meetings, along with the Town Manager. On December 5th, I met with the Executive Director of West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority, along with the Town Manager and our Executive Director of Public Works, Nicole Burnham. That same day, I participated in a ribbon cutting for the 25th anniversary of the Spa of Los Gatos. And then again, later that same day, that night, I attended another, participated in another ribbon cutting for La V M D Med Spa on North Santa Cruz Ave. On December 6th, along with my fellow council members, I participated in the annual winter celebration and lighting of the tree. And on December 7th, like my fellow council members, I participated in the annual holiday parade. December 11th, I met with John Cowan of El Camino Health and Board Member for the Chamber of Commerce. And December 12th, I attended a ribbon cutting for Santa's Workshop at Old Town.
Busy time of year. I was fortunate to be able to participate in all of the holiday events that were mentioned, and I don't think I missed one. And it was a pleasure to be in town and to experience everything that's going on. Couple of other meetings that I participated in was a Finance Commission meeting on the 9th, and also a ribbon cutting at Santa's Workshop, which people may or may not know, we have a Santa resident in Old Town through the Chamber of Commerce. So that was exciting, and that was the first time I operated the scissors. I also observed the DEI Commission meeting on the 12th. And then that brings me to Wreaths Across America that Councilmember Risto mentioned. For those of you who don't know, it is a nonprofit that produces wreaths, and those wreaths are placed on as many graves of veterans as possible across America. And I think we have 2,800 in Los Gatos Memorial Park. And so it was a very moving experience, a little bit different than Memorial Day or Veterans Day. bit different than Memorial Day or Veterans Day. And yet, it was, it was, it was really great to be out in that beautiful park. I did meet with Assembly Member Pellerin to discuss older adult services and how to make some of those services more sustainable and not just survive by the generous one off grants that that are available. So that was, that was a very productive meeting. And I just want to comment on the appointments that were made last night, because I've participated in the commission appointments, either as an applicant or interviewing. And I have to say that the group that we had was absolutely outstanding. We had, I think, initially 37 people. We scheduled for 33. And I think that almost every commission was populated through energetic and really intelligent people. And I really liked the format, because it felt like a conversation across this table about the future of our town with some people who are very committed to it. So I don't know, maybe it just struck me because I was, you know, involved in coordinating, but I really have taken a lot away from that particular meeting. So with that, ask the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we've completed our season for our remarkable events in the town. Kudos to staff, volunteers, and all our partners for an amazing tree lighting and for the flawless execution of the holiday parade. What a treat to see it now on the back end, having served, been in it and watching it. Now I got to be on the other side. There were many town, town resources committed, and I'm proud of the dedication in providing these wonderful events and to Monica, Jessica, and the rest of the staff. They're amazing. As we discussed earlier, I'm looking at revamping our events. We look forward to partnering with the DEI Commission to integrate opportunities to further equity in our programming. And while the new events are really limited to school type events, I think we don't need to change the plan to address, this is really a change of events. So we'll be able to work really closely with them on that. Town administrative offices will be closed from December 24 through January 1. And the library will be closed from December 23 to the 25, and December 30 through January 1. But of course, police and our emergency response will still be operating 24 hours a day. So I wish you all and to the residents watching, happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a closed session report?
Yes, I'd like to report that the town council met in closed session to discuss an appointee performance evaluation and anticipated litigation. And there's no items to report at this time.
There's one addition. The second item on the performance evaluation to the town manager, obviously, we didn't finish. We will be continuing that meeting to a date uncertain in January.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, thank you for everyone for bearing with us for a relatively long meeting, but I think a productive one. And I would just, for anyone who's still listening, I wish them a very happy holidays. And the council will convene on January 21. This meeting is adjourned.